Good evening, everyone. May I remind you members please that these proceedings are being recorded. Can we take the notice convening the meeting as read?
Read.
The next item is the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 21st of November. Can we agree the minutes of the meeting of the 21st November 2018?
Read.
Members have been asked to declare their declarations of interest on the board at the entrance to the chamber. Do any members have any further declarations? I have some announcements to make. It is with great sadness that I refer to the death earlier this month of former councillor leader, council leader, Robert Simmons, aged 69 years. Bob spent six years as leader from May 2002 to May 2008. He represented the Tynan Farm Ward from 1988 until 2004, when this changed to be Castle Ward, which he represented until 2010. During his leadership, Bob oversaw a series of projects, including the Sunderland Aquatic Centre, Building Schools for the Future Programme, and the signing of the Friendship Agreement between Sunderland and the US capital, Washington DC. Bob served on numerous council committees, including the Cabinet, Personnel Committee, Education, Environment, Housing, Public Health and Social Services committees. He represented the council on a number of outside bodies during his tenure as leader, including the Association of North East Councils, the Local Government Association, Newcastle International Airport, and North East Regional Employees Organisation. Bob also served as a school governor at Beck's Hill, Hastings Hill and Tynan Farm, for many years before becoming a former company member, director and chair of Wise Academies, which leads a series of schools across the region, including the above schools I've mentioned. Bob was awarded NOBE last June in the Queen's Birthday Honours List for his services to education. Bob worked hard for our city both as a councillor and council leader and cared deeply about Sunderland and our residents. It is also with sadness that I mention the death of Lord Derek Foster of Bishop Auckland, who died on the 5th of January, aged 81 years, in Sunderland Hospital. Derek Foster was born in Sunderland, son of a shipyard fitter. From Bead Grammar School, he won a place at Oxford University, graduating with BA in Philosophy, Politics and Economics. He was first elected to Sunderland Borough Council in 1972 for St Chad's Ward, and then in 1973 he was elected to serve on the Tyne and Wear County Council as a representative of the Downhill Ward. From 1974 to 1976, he was Chair of the North of England Development Council. Derek became Assistant Director of Education for Sunderland Borough Council in 1974, until his election as MP for Bishop Auckland in 1979. He spent 10 years as Labour Chief Whip and was very closely associated with the modernisation efforts of the leader, Neil Kinnock. Derek Foster stood down from the House of Commons at the 2005 elections and was appointed to the House of Lords, becoming a life peer. He was passionate about the North East and remained deeply involved across the region. He was a member of the Salvation Army and his funeral was held last week in Millfield at the Salvation Army headquarters in Rutland Street in Sunderland. Finally, I must inform council of the death of Mr Frank Major, former Port of Sunderland manager, who passed away aged 74 years on the 9th of October. Frank was general manager of the Port of Sunderland until he retired in 2005, after 45 years of service in the ports and the shipping industry. Frank received an MBE for his services to flood and coastal erosion risk management in 2013, having been the Chair of the Northumbria Regional Flood and Coastal Committee of the Environment Agency since 2003. Frank was a magistrate in 1992 and took the role of Deputy Lieutenant of Tyne and Wear in 2007. He was a previous chairman of the North East England Nature Partnership. Frank also had a number of roles for voluntary organisations, including the Scouts and the Royal National Lifeboat Institution. Will you please all join me in sending deepest condolences to the families and former friends of councillor leader Bob Simmons, Lord Derek Foster and Mr Frank Major? I would therefore ask you all to stand for a minute's silence as a mark of respect. Please be seated. That concludes my announcements. The next item is the reception of petitions. Do any members have petitions to present? Mr Councillor Waller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a petition here called 'The Petition to Improve Safety at Gwyneddan Infant School', signed by 250 residents. We are the undersigned London City Council to install railings around the footpath on the Legals Road at Gwyneddan Infant School in order to improve safety for the children attending there. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Samuels?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a petition here from English Marters Primary School, signed by 179 residents, that's we are the undersigned our teachers, staff, parents, carers and families of pupils attending English Marters Primary School and residents living in the surrounding area, following longstanding concerns about the safety of children arriving at and leaving the school during the high speeds at which cars travel on the board and the recent serious accident in November 2018 where a 10-year-old child was hit by a car and had to be airlifted to hospital with severe injuries. We call on the council to urgently look to implement board safety measures on Redcar Road to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Samuels. Can we agree to refer these to the appropriate chief officers? Do we have any apologies for absence?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have apologies from councillors Davison, Dee Dixon, Huron, Dee McKnight, P Walker, Watson, Dee Wilson, Williams, Scaplehorn, and Alderman, Arnett, Forbes and Greenfield.
Thank you. Are there any further apologies that members wish to note? Thank you very much indeed.
Councillor Paul Hunter?
Any others, no, that's it? Thank you very much indeed. The next item is questions by members of the public. I will read these questions out and they will be answered by the appropriate officers. The first question is from Mr IWK, and the question is as follows: Following recent accidents involving children outside the English Marters and Northern Saints School, could the leader provide an update on the proposed council plans for an extensive 20 mile per hour for Redhouse and surrounding areas of North Sunderland? That would be answered by Councillor Amy Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to thank Mr Care for his question. A 20 mile an hour zone has been proposed for the Redhouse area, which includes the countryway outside English Marters School. The scheme also covers Tynan Farm, Downhill, Hilton Castle, Withowack and Marley Ports. During the council's engagement process, concerns were raised by bus operators that the introduction of the scheme will result in increased transit time and as such will have a significant detrimental effect on the ability to provide reliable, timely, attractive and sustainable public transport operations in the city. To alleviate the bus operator's concerns and to remove the potential for formal objection to the scheme, officers have been developing bus stop improvements throughout the 20 mile an hour zone to counteract any detrimental impact on bus services. A meeting between officers and the bus operator is due to be held on the 7th of February to discuss the scheme and subject to resolving the bus operator's concerns and no formal objections being received during the statutory legal process. It is hoped that implementation will commence in May 2018. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson. Question two, question two is from Craig McFarlane. Does the leader think spending £16,000 to jet off to China gives the right impression of his caring for the community he is meant to serve whilst cutting vital public services? Leader?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr McFarlane, you really do need to have a quiet word with your sources of information. £16,000, really? Your sources clearly rubbish or very poor arithmetic. The total cost for my visit to China in January was £3,030. In today's global economy, it is essential for Sunderland, like other cities, to engage in the wider world and send a clear message that we are open for business. This forms part of a balanced approach, which is important for the council in seeking to serve Sunderland's communities and their needs. The visit in January enabled Sunderland to be represented at the International Sister Cities Symposium, where 24 cities and city regions alongside Sunderland got together in Harbin and take part in the Mayor's Roundtable with senior representatives from those cities and city regions. It allowed us to introduce the city and its strengths within this forum, as well as sharing experience on international engagement and opportunities that we come forward from it. Sunderland has a friendship agreement with Harbin, which was signed in 2009. This partnership is set within the context of the citywide international strategy, which focuses on generating benefits for the city's economy and businesses, its people and communities and its brand and reputation. I do believe that investing £3,030 and five days of my time at the start of January was a wise investment and that Sunderland will continue to benefit commercially from our global engagement strategy. And by the way, it is nine years of austerity introduced by the Fidems and Tories in coalition in 2010 that has resulted in over £290 million of cuts to this council's budget. This council is delivering what it can with the money it has left, so blame the Tories and Fidems for the cuts, not this Labour council. And in closing, Sunderland currently has 25,106 jobs in 85 internationally owned companies originating in 20 different territories. And during the last five years, we have secured over 4,000 jobs and capital investment totaling £533.2 million from overseas companies because the business investment team and occasionally the leader goes overseas and talks to countries and businesses who want to do business with us. And I think £3,030 was very well spent indeed, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leader. Question three from Richard Bradley. I believe that Sunderland Council's waste management programme is failing the city with financial and environmental consequences we can ill afford. However, the opposition parties are silent on this matter and the portfolio holder disagrees. Therefore, can Councillor Wilson give me one government statistic on waste she is proud of and where Sunderland is better than the national average? Thank you, Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to thank Richard for his question. A statistic that Sunderland Council can be proud of and is better than the regional average is that we only sent 0.5% of our waste to landfill. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson. Question from Rachel Lowe. The recent IPCC report gave the world only 12 years to take the decisive action necessary to avoid a climate disaster. Labour councils such as London, Manchester and Bradford have all declared a climate emergency and we have committed to being carbon neutral by 2030. Sorry, they have committed to being carbon neutral by 2030. Will Sunderland Council do the same? Councillor Maude?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, tackling climate change is a key priority for the council in our emergent city plan and we currently have an aspiration to be carbon neutral by 2030. We recognise the impact of climate change and the challenges that it brings and have recently published our carbon plan, which outlines the activity we will undertake to reduce carbon emissions in order to meet the targets as set out in the UK Climate Change Act. We are working with partners to identify additional measures to reduce the impact of CO2 emissions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Maude. Question from Dom Armstrong. The desire to save our green belt engaged thousands of residents but didn't change the local plan at all. Why did the council choose to dismiss the opinion of those it's supposed to be representing? Councillor Porthouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And can I thank Dom Armstrong? Question, Madam Mayor. Mr Armstrong is wrong, absolutely wrong. This council did not choose to dismiss the opinions of those it represents, quite the opposite. Mr Dom Armstrong, the local candidate for the Green Party, has his facts completely wrong. The council have taken into consideration all representations, including all issues raised by residents submitted to the council on the core strategy and development plan and has published a schedule of representations which summarise the issues raised in the council's response. The council at this stage can only propose minor modifications to the plan which are identified in the schedule of modifications. All representations have been submitted to the planning inspector for his consideration and he could identify further modifications he requires to make the plan sound during the examination in public. Any such modifications will be consulted on later this year. All documents referred to are available on the council's website, Madam Mayor. Furthermore, can I also add that there was only 3% of the green belt was proposed to be removed, which entailed 15 sites. Following consultation, four were removed, the remaining sites representing approximately 2% of the original green belt. The sites removed were Glebe House Farm in Washington, Offden in Shining War Ward, and I think it's Perth Hall in Springville and of course West Park in Middle Hurington. Furthermore, Madam Mayor, the plan now protects large swathes of open countryside, which was designated white land. Some of those sites are land in the Heth, in Easingdon Lane areas, large areas surrounding Tunstall Hills, sites in Washington and of course a little known field called the Wishingwell Field in Councillor Blackett's office, which I believe in November they voted against the plan. So basically, voting against this plan was endorsing developers to come along and choose sites which are now protected. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Porthouse. Next question from Rachel Featherstone. Last week, the Sunderland Echo reported that 2,000 people are waiting for social housing, particularly bungalows. Would the council pledge to make providing these homes a priority rather than the wholly unnecessary executive homes they plant on the green belt? Again, Councillor Porthouse, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and can I thank Rachel Featherstone for her question? The core strategy and development plan will require developments of 10 new units above, across the city to deliver 15% as affordable homes. At present, it's only 10%. The council's work with a number of partners ensure that affordable homes in balance is addressed. Furthermore, Madam Mayor, we must not forget it was the Tory party who introduced the right to buy, consequently removing large numbers of social affordable housing from the rented sector market. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Porthouse. The next question is from Heather Fagan, care workers. In recent months, the council... Sorry. In recent months, the council have enforced their third-party contracts within the adult care to introduce a telephone check-in service, which involves care workers to report in when they arrive and leave a service user's home. This means that care workers do not get paid for any travelling time between each visit. Hence, they could work a 12-hour day yet only get paid for eight. Can the council explain how this aligns with the ethos of their Great Job Motion? Councillor Dr Walker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to Miss Fagan for asking this question. I'm glad to have the precedence before the next question, where Councillor Kelly gets the opportunity to talk about the very important question of the Spice Girls concert. In fact, I'll just clarify the situation as it stands at the moment. The council has introduced a new way of quality monitoring commissioned home care visits into people's homes by the implementation of electronic call monitoring system called CM2000. Home care providers are in agreement with the principles and implementation of the system and this system enables both the council and providers to inform a more accurate picture of the volume of care that is required to meet customers' needs and support their safety and wellbeing. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councillor Dr Walker. Next question from Amy Jane Humble. Following the news that the council will be providing financial assistance to the stadium to host the Spice Girls, can the council assure the public that individual councillors will not be benefiting from any gifts, kind of gifts, from the stadium, such as free ticket VIP boxes for the same said concert? Over to you, Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm resisting all the temptations and all the requests I've had to say certain Spice Girls lines and we'll just get on with the answer. Can I thank Amy Jane Humble for the question, Madam Mayor? The council is proud to support cultural events across the city and the forthcoming concert at the stadium on Rite is just one of a raft of events that helped Sunderland, helped put Sunderland on the map. As a destination city with events at its heart, the increased visitors will bring a benefit to local economy that in turn benefit residents and communities. I can confirm, Madam Mayor, I have not had an invite to the Spice Girls, I have not got a VIP box and to the best of my knowledge, none of my colleagues have either.
No, I haven't either, thank you. Thank you very much indeed, Councillor Kelly. And that concludes the questions. We now move on, we now move on to the report of the Cabinet. Can I call upon the leader to move the approval and adoption of the report of the Cabinet?
Aye, so move, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Leader, do you second the report?
I second the report, Madam Mayor, reserve the right to speak.
Leader, if you would like to speak to the Cabinet report?
Madam Mayor, the three items are fully laid out and I just need it to go forward, is that, thank you very much?
Would anyone else like to speak to the report? Councillor Oliver? Councillor Dixon? Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a brief comment and question on items one and two. On the council tax base, item one, it does make clear that the council tax base in this city is very heavily concentrated in council tax A and B properties and along with them, a high level of discounts. And of course, I see Councillor Miller complaining in the newspaper today about local government funding, but of course, this is one of the problems when the council tax base is so small and the central government grant is cut, then those authorities that have very small council tax bases are going to lose out. So we are where we are with it, but it does mean that it is very, very important that this city in the future does have executive housing and does have housing in higher, in higher bands. We had 398 new houses last year. I'd be interested to know if the leader has got the information tonight or maybe later, what bands those 398 houses fall into and therefore what increase in council tax revenue we have had over the last year. And secondly, on item two, the local council tax support scheme, I notice on this that it is required that pensioners are protected, but it's not clear whether the other criteria in it is demanded by, by central government or not, such as for example the two-child limit, which has been introduced in line with national welfare reform. So I'd be grateful if you made that clear, whether that's entirely a choice of this council or whether that's been done because it's been demanded by central government. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like just to refer to council tax empty property premium, which is basically say that we are very pleased that the council has taken this on, it's legislation from the Conservative government and I think it's good legislation to increase the extra empty rate from 50% to 100 at home. However, a question if I may. I was talking to somebody involved in local government in the Midlands on empty properties and some people were worried that it might apply to those houses that were empty for legitimate reasons, long-term medical care, people being placed in old people's homes, etc. And I would like an assurance that those sort of people would be treated much more differently and distinguished from private landlords who are leaving their properties empty. Thank you.
Councillor Maude, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Leader? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Dixon, I have no idea if there's any distinction from your Conservative government's legislation, but I'll ask the connect officer and get a response to you if that's okay. Councillor Oliver? I once again have absolutely no idea how many of those homes are in what band, so I'll make sure that you get that information sent to you tomorrow if that's all right. And regarding the council tax scheme issues, that's probably best as a discussion with Joan Reid, if that's okay, and I'll make sure that officer speaks with you tomorrow as well because once again, I'm unsure on that answer and I don't want to say the wrong thing to you, Oliver, if that's okay.
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. So do we accept the report of the Cabinet?
Read.
We now turn to written questions by members of the council. First question is from Councillor Stephen Foster and will be answered by Councillor Paul Stewart. Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, could the leader update council on the recent cyber attack on our IT systems in November 2018, which appeared to be part of a sustained attack on some local authorities by external forces? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Can I first of all thank Councillor Foster for my question? The council suffered a disreputable denial of service, get that right, DDoS attack in November 2018, which is where the perpetrator seeks to make a machine or a network resource unavailable to its intended users by temporarily or indefinitely disrupting services of a host connected to the internet. The attack commenced at approximately 10am, at which point the ITC service severed the council's external links to protect all IT services and ensure all internal systems could continue to operate as normal. The ITC service worked very closely with the council's internet service provider and its mitigation was quickly configured to implement and implemented to absorb the attack before it reached us. At approximately 3pm, the internet connection was re-established and all services returned to normal. The IT service worked closely with the National Cyber Security Centre and follows all guidelines to protect the council from cyber attack and maintain good cyber hygiene. A report was recently taken to scrutiny coordinating committee on the 17th of January 2019, which summarises the position regarding recent IT activity and confirms that IT controls are in place, are strong and are subject to ongoing review. In relation to the DDoS attack that took place in Sunderland, it's interesting to... In relation to the DDoS attack that took place in Sunderland, it's interesting to refer to the fact that in the few weeks preceding that, both Newcastle, Stockton, Manchester and Bedford councils were also attacked, and these councils were offline substantially longer than Sunderland. This was the first occasion where Sunderland had suffered a significant DDoS attack, and the downtime was relatively short. I'd like to take the opportunity, Madam Mayor, to thank the staff that were involved in ensuring that we've got robust systems in place in Sunderland, and that it was a job well done. But I would say that it's a welcome reminder, I think, to all of us, and particularly elected members, to always be vigilant while online. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you very much for that detailed reply. Question two, Councilor Robert Francis, and it will be answered by Councilor Stuart Porthouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last full meeting of council, we were promised a deep dive into the redevelopment of the Seaburn Seafront. Can the portfolio holder tell us what progress has been made, with special reference being made to the works to be undertaken north of Dykens Road? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, wasn't it the last full meeting of council, it was the September meeting, when the Deputy Leader gave that assurance? Just for information. But can we, Councilor Francis, probably, prior note of the question? At the September meeting of full council, Sigleyon were asked to commence to review the deep dive, well, I'm never sure what actually deep dive means, of the proposed redevelopment of Seaburn. Since then, Sigleyon has again been reviewing what market demand there is to deliver a greater quantum of leisure uses at the seafront. Once the demand is understood, a programme of investments will then be considered for approval. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, gentlemen. Third question is from Councilor Stephen O'Brien. The question reads, can the Leader confirm how many young people who are EU nationals are currently in our care system or receiving council support, and what is our strategy for assisting them? Councilor Farthing?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank Councilor O'Brien for prior notice of the question. I was tempted to respond to his email last week to suggest that he'd asked the wrong question, or possibly asked it a little prematurely, because, like most of us in this room, I believe I am an EU citizen. I certainly have an EU passport, and I won't stop being the EU citizen until, I believe, the 29th of March, or possibly even later, depending what happens in Parliament. So, the question that you've asked, I assume that you wanted to know about non-UK EU residents, but you didn't ask that, so I don't have that information. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Question four. Councilor O'Neill and Councilor Graham Miller, the Leader will reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would the Leader wish to comment on the recent report by the United Nations which confirmed that the austerity programme enacted since 2010 by Liberal Democrats and Tory governments continues to fall disproportionately upon the poor, women, racial and ethnic minorities, children, single parents, and people with disabilities? In addition, that deliberate changes to taxes and benefits since 2010 have been highly aggressive, and the policies have taken the highest toll on those least able to bear it. Would he agree with me that the parties responsible should be condemned for deliberately inflicting poverty on around a fifth of the whole population, many now destitute and unable to afford the very basics for life, as evidenced in the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilor O'Neill, for the question. I understand that Councilor O'Neill is referring to the report from Philip Alston, who was appointed by the United Nations to look at poverty in the UK. That's poverty in the UK, the UK that's got the fifth largest economy in the world. We're talking poverty in the UK. Or say it again, poverty in the UK, and we're the fifth largest economy in the world. Amazing. He issued his report in November, and I understand that he will present this to the United Nations Human Rights Council later this year. For the benefit of members in the chamber who have not seen this report, he concluded that about 14 million British people, as Councilor O'Neill pointed out, the fifth of the population, now live in poverty. Further, he identified that about 1.5 million people are destitute and that they are unable to afford basic essentials on a daily basis. He was citing figures from the Institute for Fiscal Studies and the Joseph Rowntree Foundation. He highlighted predictions that child poverty could worsen even more, rising by seven percentage points between 2015 and 2022, and possibly ending up at a rate of about 40%. Forty percent of our children potentially in child poverty in the fifth richest economy in the world. His report covered topics such as austerity, which had brought misery to many, the impact of universal credit, which required an overhaul, no, it just requires getting rid of, as it was not delivering its intended principles, how the social safety net was no longer working following cuts to local authority budgets at a time of rising social care demand, the impact of a digitalized welfare state which excluded those people who did not have access or skills to use technology, and how changes to taxes and benefits have taken the highest toll on those least able to bear it. It is telling that he felt compelled to state that in the UK, poverty is a political choice. Austerity is a political choice. That political choice was made by the coalition government in 2010, when the FIP Dems and Tories delivered austerity as a political tool to attack Northern Labour councils and the poorest, those least able to look after themselves. In the fifth richest economy in the world, which we're rightly proud of, we have food banks, increased poverty, destitution, increases in homelessness and rough sleeping, increases in suicide, child poverty on the rise, and meanwhile, the rich get richer, the poor get poorer, and we all pay for it. So, the fifth richest economy in the world. Mr Alston's report, I think, states where we actually are, austerity is to blame, so let's blame the Liberal Democrats and the Tories in this chamber, because it's their combined government that started that process in 2010, and nine years later, we're still dealing with the ongoing effects of it. And, Councilor O'Neill, everything you said in your question was correct. Thank you very much for asking it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Question five is by Councilor Peter Wood, and will be responded to by Councilor Amy Wilson. Councilor Wood?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Does the council have any plans to introduce a workplace parking levy in the city?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to thank Councilor Peter Wood for his question. The council has no plans at present to introduce a workspace parking levy in the city. However, Cabinet recently consulted on its draft budget for 2019/20. Council will be aware that one of the proposals under consideration was in relation to parking charges for Sunderland City Council staff. This is a separate item to that referred to in the question, but I am highlighting this to avoid any confusion. Cabinet will consider the final budget proposals on the 13th of February before they come to council on the 6th of March. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed. Question six will be read by Councilor Niall Hudson and answered by Councilor G Wilson. My says Councilor Wilson, so it must be Leader. Sorry, Leader. If you put it either more, you wouldn't have done. Thank you, Councilor Hudson.
Thank you. Representative from the North East Chamber of Commerce recently made clear to a council committee and the local media how damaging a no-deal Brexit would be to Sunderland. What representations has the council leadership made to the government to make clear the impact no-deal would have on the economy of the city? And what representations has the council leadership made to avoid a no-deal outcome? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Hudson, for assuming that this Labour group has the power to do any of that, but it's very much appreciated of the three of us. For some time, council members and officers have been working in depth on the impacts of Brexit and have played a key role in the North East Brexit Group, which was formed following the decision to leave the EU back in 2016. The group provides a collective single voice to contribute to and influence the ongoing national dialogue around Brexit. It is made up of members from business representative organisations, the education sector, trade unions, local authorities including ourselves, the North East Local Enterprise Partnership, and voluntary organisations. The group has monitored and prepared evidence about the potential impact of Brexit scenarios, including no-deal and related economic issues, incorporating evidence, views, experiences and responses of business, education, and other organisations in the North East region to ensure that a clear and coordinated North East voice is heard. As part of this, the group has published a response to the Migration Advisory Committee call for evidence, published a key messages statement on what our regional priorities are to inform Brexit negotiations, published a meta-analysis of reports and studies examining the impact of Brexit on the North East economy and its key sectors, responded to the APPG inquiry into post-Brexit funding, specifically the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, and supported the development of the Brexit toolkit available on the North East Growth Hub website. Sunderland through the Deputy Leader also leads on Brexit planning for the National Key Cities Group and organised a Beyond Brexit Conference in the autumn, which was designed to air and bring the implications of Brexit on the key cities to the government's attention. I'm not sure what more we could do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed. Question seven, Councilor Loughlin, to be replied to by Councilor Dr Geoffrey Walker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Winter and the festive period can be an especially lonely time for many residents in Sunderland. Could the Leader explain what steps the council has undertaken to tackle loneliness and social isolation? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to Councilor Loughlin for forming notes of the question and give me the opportunity to share the response with the council. First of all, the council through its adult social care services engages with over 6,000 people aged 18 years and above. Of course, some of these individuals will experience loneliness and isolation. Also, the council's work with the social care sector in the city provides a range of services that are aimed at relieving loneliness and social isolation for both individuals and carers. These services include home care service, where carers actively engage with individuals in their own homes, assisting with daily living tasks and providing companionships and social interaction. In addition to this, personal assistance are available to help people access services in the community, helping people to go out of their homes and engage in community activity. In terms of the voluntary community sector in the city, they are also active in providing services to and contracting people by arranging fare visits to people's homes, providing building-based service that people can access, and also keeping in touch with people by telephone and social media. Sunderland has a very active care center and arrangements for providing information, advice and guidance to carers and helping them engage with other carers, encouraging social interaction. Most councils will be familiar with social isolation and loneliness projects in their own areas through the work of their area committees, of course. The council through its work at Sunderland College has an intergenerational work programme in place whereby students who are studying health and social care programmes undertake work experience in the extra care and residential group living arrangements, engaging directly with residents, encouraging social interaction through conversation activities. This to date has been very successful and received national recognition. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed. The next question is Councilor Peter Wood, and will be answered by Councilor Michael Maudie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Traffic congestion at the roundabout immediately south of the Weymouth Bridge is already a problem. The dual carriageway linking Northern Spire and St Mary's Boulevard is due for completion in 2021. What plans are there for the completion of the dual carriageway to the port, and how will congestion at the roundabout be tackled?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As part of the Northern Gearwave project around Deirdre Street and North Bridge Street, there will be some amendments to the Southern Bridgehead Junction that will assist with existing traffic issues which sometimes occur at this location during the peak hour periods. Madam Mayor, the council will continue to progress the development of phase five of the SSTC project from Bridge Street to Commercial Road, leading to the port, which includes a number of junction improvements and a full dueling of West Way Street. We will continue to look for funding opportunities to deliver this scheme and our currently developed proposals in line with the DFT and Transport for the North Major Road Network Funding Strakes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next question, Councilor Martin Haswell, and will be answered by Councilor John Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In light of the recent news that people manufacturing Spice Girls merchandise for Comic Relief are earning as low as £35 an hour and working under appalling conditions, would the Leader commit to engaging with the event's organiser for the upcoming concert at the Stadium Light and ask that they ensure that official merchandise sold at the event is being manufactured effectively? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I, Councilor Haswell, for the question and answer? The council ensures its own employees earn their living wage and fully support initiatives that seek to achieve this for others. We cannot influence how the Spice Girls and Comic Relief merchandise is manufactured, unfortunately, but yes, we will certainly question the organisation around their policies. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Kelly. Question 10, Councilor Harry Truman, to be answered by the Leader.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would the Leader wish to comment on the current industrial dispute between River Rail North and the RMT that has resulted in around 40 days of strike action taking place since March in 2017? Would you agree with me that this dispute is politically motivated by government's interference in the commercial business of River Rail North by requiring they introduce driver-controlled operations on at least 50% of Northern services?
Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Truman, for the question, and I do agree with you. But it's not only you, Councilor Truman, it's not only me, it's not only the Labour group, it's Barry White, the chief executive of Transport for the North, who says that. And I'll just read you one paragraph from his letter that was sent out regarding this position on the 27th of November 2018, reposition on ongoing industrial action on the network operated by Northern. Transport for the North does not support removing the second person from trains, particularly when a significant proportion of rail stations in the north of England are classed as inaccessible for disabled passengers. So it is clearly a politically motivated stunt by the government to put pressure on the unions and their workers to accept what the rail operator wants to do, and it has to be opposed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Question 11, Councilor Peter Wood, will be answered by Councilor Paul Stewart.
Madam Mayor, unless there's something further Councilor Stewart intends to say in answer to the first question this evening, I'm happy to withdraw.
You're withdrawing a question, Councilor Wood?
Unless there's something further, Councilor Stewart has to say.
Thank you very much indeed. I'm sure there won't be. Councilor 12? Question 12, Councilor Hudson? Councilor Hudson, do you wish to speak, ask your question on trip to China, or have you had enough information this evening?
Well, Mayor, I'm sure you have. Well, the previous question was specifically about the cost of the Leader's trip, and I have no issue with that. And it was quite nice to the Leader to clarify how much it did cost. Just to clarify, what I'm getting at here is, China is notoriously a very hard market to break into and extremely competitive, so I want to know how that... to break into and extremely competitive, so I want to know how that, the money that is spent in your visit will have an impact and how we can hope to have an impact for the benefits of it. Thank you. Well, that is the question, I think. It's the justification of the trip, that's what I'm asking.
Do I want him to give a brief response?
I'm quite happy to repeat chapter and verse from the following questions, to be perfectly honest, because it's a good news story. It's councillor Hodgson, I believe it is easily valuable for money. I really do think that anybody who is sitting looking at it fairly, seeing that the investment of £3,030 for me to go to Harbin on the 3rd of January to be there for five days at the start of the year to work with the business investment team with 24 cities and 24 city regions, including Harbin, which is the regional capital in the north east of China, and will be a huge economic driver going forward in the 21st century, and to enable that, to sit down and talk with all those businesses, to find out what's going on in Arvus and Denmark, all the way to Taranaki in New Zealand and everything in between, right? To give our business investment team the best opportunity to engage with those people. And this team has a proven record, I'll repeat it, £533.2 million in direct inward investment to the city in the last five years, because we've gone overseas to find new markets and bring money in business here. If you can't see that councillor Hodgson, you do need glasses, because I think it's clear to everybody in the room. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, gentlemen. The next question is by councillor Barry Curran and will be responded to by councillor John Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, can I congratulate all those involved in the successful bid by Sunderland City Council and its treaty partners to secure funding from the FA, the Premier League and Sports England National Park Light Football Hope Programme? Would the leader please update council as to the timeframe for the implementation of three proposed hubs in Sunderland and the impact this will bring sport to the city?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can I thank councillor Curran for advancing the question? Madam Mayor, we've actually already started and on Monday, the 21st of this year, across the three sites, Portquarry, Community North Sport Complex Downhill and Northern Mary Plainfield, we've had opportunities for all the space to go into the ground and start the work. Detail of the exact site owners for all three sites will be communicated in due course, but it's anticipated that all three hubs will be operational this year, enabling football to be created across the site, the site in 2019-2020 football season. Updates on all tour members will be provided on a monthly basis. The aim of the park light programme, Madam Mayor, is to ensure grassroots football is accessible, sustainable, with the impact being an increase in individuals of all ages and of those who are physically active. Madam Mayor, we've had some really fantastic support from the Durham FA, the Premier League and council organisations. And indeed, Madam Mayor, recently, we organised a trip to go down to Sheffield, it was, for colleagues to have a look at the park light, which is operational down there. Madam Mayor, I'm dismayed to say, not one opposition councillor went down, it was all here the councillors who took the opportunity and the opportunity was open to everybody, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Next question, councillor Michael Dixon, and again will be answered by councillor John Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The narrow failure to become the 2021 City of Culture was, of course, a great disappointment. Can the portfolio holder confirm that the subsequent work being carried out by the council since that decision in late 2017 is such that the experience gained by all concerned, involved, sorry, in the bid process has been fully utilised to ensure that the rich cultural story of the city will become more widely known? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Again, thank you, Madam Mayor, and again, thanks to councillor Dixon for the question. Madam Mayor, the last 12 months has been a whirlwind of 12 months, to be honest, and the Sunderland council has continued to invest in the city cultural offer, investing in big events such as tall ships as well as ongoing support for venues such as the museum in Winter Garden in the centre of Washington. The city has recently been successful in raising national investment for the museum through the Weymouth Wilson Foundation. City council continues to work with bidding partners, the University of Sunderland and the Mac Trost, for the development of Sunderland culture. With the partners, we have seen a number of important cultural projects in development, such as the new fire station. We believe we will see around £600 million invested in culture in the city over the next seven years, as we set out the 24/7 strategy. Madam Mayor, I think, you know, we were launching this weekend, the Leonardo da Vinci collection that's in Sunderland, there are so many fantastic stories, and I think that there is a drive and an ambition for this city to continue forward, strong cultural activity, not only in the city side, but across the whole city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed, gentlemen. Next question is from councillor Stephen O'Brien, and it will be answered by councillor Stuart Porthouse. The question reads, can the leader clarify what steps the council can take to bring derelict fire damaged properties back into use? Councillor Porthouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll thank councillor Stephen O'Brien for the question, but really, is this, is this the kind of question you bring to council? I mean, is this, this is a serious business here, and bringing lightweight questions to council really is a waste of all of our people's times. Responsibility for bringing derelict fire damaged properties back into use lies with the building owner, and as a councillor, you should know that. Depending upon the circumstances, the council can use enforcement powers to make those responsible take action. If such buildings are unsafe or threatening, they may be the surrounding community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, gentlemen. Question 16 is from councillor Doris Turner and will be answered by councillor Dr Geoffrey Walker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Men's Shed project, SIB funding, which has been awarded to organisations in the Hethen Ward to help combat social isolation, is being a huge success, not only helping socially isolated people, but also helping volunteers, especially those who have faced loneliness themselves. One of the most recent projects is the Men's Shed entitled Down the Pit, which is taking place at Hethen Lions Country Park. A future project which has been awarded funding is the development of the community allotment. Could the portfolio holder tell the council if there is feedback as to how the participants have been helped and how it has made a difference in their lives? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Turner for giving me the opportunity to share the positive outcomes of this project. £3,000 SIB was successfully awarded to Springboard in March 2018 as part of the Caulfield Area Committee's social isolation priority. The project run from April 2018 to March 2019, when it will complete and when the evaluation will be completed after that date. The project target males who are at risk of social isolation are encouraged and engaged in activities and events in the local area of Hethen, predominantly Hethen Lions, Country Park and Down Pitts Lane. Programme initially focused on building friendships and delivering a limited range of activities, including heritage and history researching, coding, IT skills and horticulture. Males are targeted in a number of ways, including working with partners such as Hethen Hope, Hethen New Dawn, JP Surgeries and with local job centres. The group formally meets each Friday and there are up to 15 participants at any one time. The sessions have developed and other activities and events now take place, depending on the requests and interests of participants. A number of these members now visit the park on a more frequent basis and some have learned new skills in horticulture, forestry and arboretum culture, which has led them to acting as volunteers, supporting maintenance of the park. A very great success story, I think. New friendships are being forged and members meet and take part in activities outside the session. The park building is available as a space to socialise and build new networks. Positive outcomes already identified include people feel more connected and less isolated, people have learned new skills, park has new volunteers, members are aware and aware referred to other services and activities, and I welcome the full evaluation report forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you to everyone for their questions, and that concludes the 30-minute period. We have four notices of motion to get through, can we put that to a vote? Show of hands on vote.
Madam Mayor, there are 13 votes in favour, one abstention, 47 votes against, and therefore motion is defeated.
Thank you very much indeed. The rest of the questions then will be answered to the person who has submitted the question.
That will be noted, thank you very much indeed, thank you. So we now move on to our first notice of motion tonight. I invite councillor Chekka to read and move her notice of motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Periods are unnatural and female health is important. Neither should be taboo subjects in this council chamber or anywhere else. Having a period should not be considered a luxury, as it is not a choice but a decades-long and expensive reality of being a woman. Everyone who needs sanitary products, including tampons, towels, pads and other items, should have access to them. In recognising this basic right, this council notes that 1 in 10 girls and women aged 14 to 21 are unable to afford sanitary products. Almost 140,000 girls and young women, particularly those girls who receive free school meals, have missed school in the last UK year because they cannot afford to buy sanitary products. 91% of girls and young women say they've been asked to buy a pad or a tampon for a friend. This council therefore agrees to work with its partners to ensure that nobody in Sunderland suffers through the provision of free sanitary products for all who need them in all civic buildings at the earliest opportunity, local schools, including primary schools, given the increasing number of girls beginning their periods as early as eight, maintaining a provision of sanitary products for pupils, and local employers being encouraged to provide them on-site for staff and visitors. I so move the motion, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you councillor Chekka. Councillor Kelly, would you like to second the motion?
Madam Mayor, second the motion, you deserve the right to speak.
Councillor Chekka, would you like to speak to the motion?
I would, Madam Mayor. Would you allow me to do that now? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm delighted to represent this motion to the council today, allowing me to break the silence regarding periods in this chamber and hopefully within our wider communities, especially the shame experienced by those girls and women who are suffering the undignified embarrassment of period poverty. As a woman who was once a schoolgirl, I can remember the shame around periods. This humiliating stigma around menstruation is distressing enough, this is hugely amplified for girls and women who can't afford sanitary products. All women have faced the mess of an unexpected early period, myself included, but the idea that for some, this is the bloody reality of every day, of every period, is profoundly upsetting, and for me, this is galvanising. Historically, period poverty has been a taboo subject, but it hit public consciousness in December 2018 with the release of the hard-hitting film I, Daniel Blake. One scene where a struggling single mother is caught stealing sanitary towels particularly caught the imagination of the public, and food banks were flooded with donations of menstrual products. But it didn't stop there. Following this, the media were full of reports of schoolgirls routinely missing school because they were unable to afford menstrual products. Children as young as 10 were choosing to stay home to avoid the embarrassment of bleeding on their school uniform in front of their peers because they weren't adequately protected. They miss school every month because they cannot face the shame and fear of going to school using socks stuffed with tissues, old torn t-shirts or newspaper. In these families, menstrual products are an unattainable luxury. Period poverty is a worldwide phenomenon. Harrowing cases of poor menstrual hygiene are commonplace in countries like India, Kenya and Cambodia, where they have battled for years to prevent girls from dropping out of school in communities where mattress stuffing and leaves are often used for menstrual management. Yet the Kenyan government have promised to provide all schoolgirls with free menstrual pads. And more recently, the Indian state of Kerala launched a scheme which will distribute free menstrual products in around 300 schools. And yet our government in our rich nation is still refusing to act, instead taxing us for sanitary products as a luxury item and refusing to acknowledge period poverty as the national outrage that it is. It is silence that's preventing real progress from being made, and within Sunderland, we're here to break that tonight. The stigma and the shame that shrouds menstruation means girls are left to improvise alone every month, often without any knowledge from their family members or friends. As we live in a world where periods are euphemised and belittled, blue liquid is preferred to actual blood on TV adverts for sanitary towels, it's no surprise that our young women cannot and do not ask for help. We need to dispel this nonsensical taboo through conversation. By talking about our periods freely and honestly as possible, we can teach girls, as well as boys and men, that they are a completely natural process, part of the reproductive cycle and are absolutely nothing to be whispering about. Madam Mayor, until the government stands up and takes notice, it's down to us in Sunderland and within this council to take action. This is a public health issue which is directly caused by child and family poverty. You will see that this motion supports the availability of sanitary products in civic buildings such as this very building, our libraries and our school. Madam Mayor, my research and conversations over the last few weeks have begun these discussions already, with local businesses already indicating support for employees and customers. Leading the way with this is our joint venture partner for leisure services, Everyone Active, who since November last year have had a basket of complimentary sanitary products within all female staff areas, and following our recent discussions are looking to roll this out to leisure centre customers in the future. Madam Mayor, we're here within Sunderland City Council, we commission the 0-19 school nursing service. Through my research for this evening, I've heard heartbreaking stories from school nurses who are providing sanitary products for students from their own pocket, due to the impact and the shame menstruation is having on their mental health, their wellbeing and their education. Teachers, youth workers and community volunteers are doing the same. Madam Mayor, I've been inundated with information from trade unions and charities wishing to tell me how they've been supporting this campaign already within our city, within our region and nationally. As a Unite member, I'm proud that Unite are leading the campaign and are encouraging local authorities like ours to pass motions like this one, as well as lobbying government regarding period dignity in the removal of the appalling luxury VAT on menstrual products. They're spreading that message by making, that by making changes in our workplaces, our places of education and in society, women and girls will be able to have a positive period, knowing that they're able to access sanitary products. Locally, Asdor have been campaigning in government donations in supermarkets, which I'm sure people in this room will have seen recently while undertaking their grocery shopping in Tesco's and Morrison's. Astonishingly, recently, a 240-litre wheelie bin was filled with donations of menstrual products in a single day. These have already been distributed across the regions and these supermarkets themselves are now beginning to provide these products for their employees thanks to this work. Period poverty is prevalent. The latest research from Children's Charity Plan International UK reports that 1 in 10 young women aged 14 to 21 have been unable to afford period products. We know that we have these families and children living in poverty in Sunderland. Years of austerity mean that food bank dependency has dramatically increased, so if there are any cynics in the room, I will say this, it's quite simple, if you can't afford food, you can't afford menstrual products. It's for this reason that within my own ward in Southwark, my colleagues and I, through funds allocated from the community chest, will shortly be distributing donations of sanitary products through our VCS network and the Salvation Army to the food bank, family centre, community centre, community cafe, youth project, care centre, health centre and schools, and I'm sure other councillors across the city are doing the same. In Scotland, vital steps have been taken to address these issues. They have a scheme offering free products to low-income families and becoming the first national government ever to provide free access to products to schools, colleges and universities. In England, especially here in the north east of England, we're being left behind. The government has said that period poverty is an issue for schools to tackle themselves, whilst horrifically slashing education budgets. I'm a school governor and I know the difficult decisions schools have to make in order to increase the budget, although I know that some schools have started to provide these products. Again, I've met with staff who've been buying period products for their pupils with their own money, and I know that about hearing, on hearing about the local campaign run by Asdor, half a dozen or more schools have approached them to be considered for allocation of their donated products for their students and also shopingly for their staff. The responsibility to ensure that everyone can participate in their education lies with the government, not the government, not individual schools or teachers. The right to an education is a fundamental human right which should be unencumbered by biology. However, as a city council, we cannot and will not sit back and watch our young women suffer while we wait for the government to act. This evening, I propose this motion because as a group of human beings, we should be outraged, we've waited too long for action against period poverty. Madam Mayor, if this motion is passed this evening, and I hope it will be by all parties in the chamber, Sunderland City Council will not be the first, but will be one of very few across the country to make this commitment. For example, Stoke-on-Trent, as part of a charitable partnership, has now provided menstrual products in all of their A18 schools, and I hope that Sunderland can soon follow suit. Menstrual care is undoubtedly a human right, and it's time for our government to address the fact that some British girls are deprived of it. Despite many campaigns, the government has not responded to the atrocity of period poverty, and it's for this reason, on behalf of the girls and women in Sunderland, that I propose this motion this evening, and I hope that everyone will support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Chekka. Are there any amendments to the motion? Would anyone wish to speak to the motion?
Councillor Oliver. Councillor Johnston. Councillor Haswell.
Thank you, councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly to say that the Conservative group will be supporting the motion. If I'm a little bit naughty, I'll just have a look at an article you may have seen, of course, in the New Statesman by one of the Sunderland MPs, Bridget Phillips, in which she actually specifically opposed these sort of particular poverty programmes such as period poverty and hunger poverty, which I know a great fan of the other Sunderland MP, Shannon Hodgson. But Bridget Phillips did say, and it was an interesting article, and I must say, I do very strongly agree with her, that sort of, quote, "framing poverty in terms of the things that stops people buying is probably not the most effective way to think about how we do tackle poverty." But having said that, if there is a particular need and there is a genuine concern and an effective campaign on this specific thing, then the Conservative group are very happy to support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely, thank you very much indeed councillor Oliver. Councillor Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased that my own employer, where I'm also a Unite shop steward, have agreed to support the Unite period dignity campaign, and have already implemented sanitary products for female colleagues, leisure centres across Sunderland. It's fantastic and I'm grateful for supporting the campaign, and I hope further employees will also support as the campaign continues to grow. I also hope the remaining Sunderland City Council arms and organisations, including Sunderland Care Support, To Care For Tune, and Sunderland City Councilers and employers themselves, will also endorse the campaign and implement in all their workplaces. Outside of the workplace, the campaign will also put pressure on the government to remove the five per cent VAT that is currently on sanitary products. These are essential items to women and shouldn't be classed as a luxury item, so I will be supporting this motion tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Johnston. Councillor Haswell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, the Liberal Democratic Party group will be supporting the motion wholeheartedly tonight. Another item, we just want to make a small ask, was, I understand there's likely to be a large amount of disposable options made available, but whether, A, reusable options could be made available as part of this election simply to, given that some people, the most vulnerable, can't afford it, if they're in a situation at home, can't get to a civic building or to a leisure centre etcetera, there is something that can be used as an interim measure to allow them to get into school away or else, and then can deal with the situation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Haswell, I'm sure we'll look at all options available, it is very important. So I take it that everyone is agreed to the motion, do you agree? Do you want an electronic vote, or is everyone agreed? Thank you very much indeed. Thank you all for speaking. Councillor Kelly, I'm so sorry, did you want to speak? Gosh, I have... It's not very often we get everyone saying they want to agree.
Yeah, well, you know, the board's done, and it makes the job a little different. I just want to think about a couple of points, that the reason I second the notice of motion was that it was really about time that we broke down this barrier between female and all that, so I mean, imagine the reaction back around to every toilet owner, every one of the toilets in the civic centre, how much we'd have that made public knowledge with it. So it is important that we do support this notice of motion. Just want to think about a couple of points, that, first of all, Bridget Phillips, I believe actually, was quite selective in the bit you raised there councillor Oliver, it was all about wellbeing, poverty, and it was actually a bigger issue, she wasn't sort of saying that we shouldn't support people in these circumstances. So with that, Madam Mayor, given the fact that it's already passed, I'm happy to just conclude, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Did you wish to speak again? No, are you happy?
I'm happy, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much indeed. We move on to our second notice of motion, I might have a bit more luck with this. So the second notice of motion, I call on councillor Johnston to read and move the notice.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The notice of motion reads, Sunderland City Council believes that the issues relating to the events at the Pidgin of Orgreave on the eighteenth of June nineteen eighty-four are both of local and national importance. In Sunderland, miners and their families were adversely affected by the events of the day in terms of wrongful arrest, false imprisonment, ill health, family breakdown and termination of employment as a direct result of policing tactics at Orgreave. A full investigation in the military-style policing use on that day is long overdue, and only a full public inquiry can fully investigate this. Sunderland City Council therefore calls on the Home Secretary to order a full public inquiry into the deployment of actions of the police on the eighteenth of June nineteen eighty-four, and all meaningful discussions with the Orgreave Truth and Justice Campaign, the National Union of Mineworkers and concerned MPs, and I so move the notice of motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Cunningham, do you wish to second the motion?
I second the notice of motion, Madam Mayor, and I reserve the right to speak.
Thank you. Councillor Johnston, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This motion tonight is something close to my own heart, and not only affecting me mercifully, but my family as well, and I'm sure many others here tonight. I was born nine days after Orgreave, my dad was a miner, and he was on strike the first year of my life. Growing up, my mum told me the stories of what happened to them in that time, so I've always had those strong labour roots and solidarity. She always said it wasn't through the financial support my grandparents provided, and my grandfather retired miner himself, she didn't know what they would have done, long before the word food banks was ever heard in our communities. In nineteen eighty-four, the National Union of Mineworkers, the N U M, launched a national strike in response to the plans from the National Coal Board that said they wanted to close twenty mines. The N U M maintained that events proved their right, and more than seventy pickets were not hit this to be closed. In the decade that followed, the coal mining industry was effectively destroyed with the loss of thousands of jobs. The Montreal mine launch bar at Hammersmith this year tonight, over two thousand jobs were lost. In Epperton Colliery, part of the cocktail ward now, over thirty hundred jobs were lost. In response to this, on the eighteenth of June nineteen eighty-four, a mass picket was called by the N U M outside the Orgreave Corking Plant, aimed at disrupting the supply of cork to the power station of Scud Thorpe. After police approached to their post to prevent woodbag pickets from reaching their destinations, this time they could be more helpful. Guiding in mushroom miners to the site, in particular the top side of the field, to the south of the plant, many of the pickets were surprised by this unusual display of police courtesy and were rightly suspicious. The field was bound with the bottom by a corner of police officers six or more deep, blocking access to the plant, the two sides were patrolled by dog handlers with their charges. After the initial habitual pushes against the police lines, the Assistant Chief Constable ordered the police lines to open up. What followed, Madam Mayor, was dozens of mounted police officers armed with long truncheons charging up the field, followed by snatch squad officers in riding gear with short shields and truncheons. The miners fled up the hill. Many of those who couldn't avoid it run were assaulted with the batons, causing several serious injuries and dragged back through the police lines. Several similar charges followed, forcing the miners up into the village where they tried to find refuge in the gardens and the yards of industrial units. The police continued to run them up, clubbing and arresting miners indiscriminately. What happened on that day, Madam Mayor, was not a battle but a rout, and it was murder that no one was killed. A police riot in action with six veteran officers brought in from all over the country. They were all there, senior officers, superintendents, chief superintendents, and getting stuck into and encouraging other officers. This is the world from P C Martin from North Hurstian Police himself, who was seen on television straddling a defences miner on the ground and battling rapidly about to hit with his truncheon. All of these violence encouraged and directed at our miners, who were there, good, hard-working and decent human beings, striving to save their jobs, their families and their communities from an establishment that had decided to take them on. Defences men being chased through the streets by mounted police officers and attacked with extended batons. Nobody was ringing the policing, and nobody was keeping them in check. And why would they be when the Prime Minister Margaret Thatcher at that time had even called them the enemy within? What a disgraceful insult to all those men who dug out on you with their labour. I was proud to walk with those brave works on the Epperton Barney Group last year ahead of the Dyer Miners' Carer, and I'm joined here tonight by Dorton Jack Hopwich, part of that group, and again I was reminded of the stories that happened in that time. We also have an ex-mayor of the city, councillor Bonhore, who was also at Orgreave and was attacked and bitten by a police dog. The effects these events had on the miners and their families continued long after that day. In total, fifty-five miners were arrested at Orgreave at the top side of the field, and all of them were charged with riot, an offence which at that time carried a potential life sentence. Further forty miners were arrested at the bottom and charged with unlawful assembly. It took a year of waiting for a court case to be prepared, the stress this would have had on themselves and their families, I can't even imagine. In May nineteen eighty-five though, fifteen miners, all charged with riot, appeared at Sheffield Court. The trial collapsed after forty-eight days of waiting, though, when the prosecution abandoned the case. It had become clear, as police witnesses came in and out of the court, that many officers had large parts of their statements dictated them, and many relied on their accounts. One statement forged by a police officer's signature disappeared from the court over lunchtime, never to be reappeared. It also emerged in the trial that new and unlawful public order policing tactics had been used for the first time at Orgreave. The trial discredited a farce, and the prosecution, Cupid's losses, dropped the cases against the remaining eighty miners. There was never any investigation into the conduct of the police for assaulting, wrongfully arresting and falsely prosecuting so many miners, nor for lying in evidence. Not a single officer faced disciplinary or criminal proceedings. So how much of the establishment involved in this? Well, the Conservative campaign, Nicholas Ridley, wrote a report years before that, better known as the Ridley Plan, a colourist plan that made it clear, the decision was made years before, to take on the mining industry, as that was the biggest prize. Coal stocks were built up, and the police force strengthened, all in preparation. This was a political action led by Margaret Thatcher and the Conservative government, all in with the aim of destroying mining zones and closing Dyer Mine Communities. What happened at Orgreave must have been the most violent police behaviour seen in the modern industrial dispute, but the culmination of a concerted political campaign to diminish the strength of the trade unions without any thought or compassion for the people in the communities that were suffering, standing in their way. A policy that clearly indicated there will be no comeback on the place for system is to happen. The media also played their part in the trade government's version of events. After Orgreave, the media unfairly vilified the miners before in violence, when in fact it was the policing that instigated it. Our mining communities deserve to hear the counterfeiting of what happened on that day, as Orgreave represents one of the most serious miscountering justice in this country's history, and it has never been addressed. It is important that the truth is established, and the place of broader account. Many of the miners have been left with ongoing physical and psychological problems, many lost their jobs, their marriages, and were left with a sense of dravence and untrust treatment that continues to haunt the labour of the day. It led to a massacre of their entrusted police in former mining communities, and this continues to occur among the children and the grandchildren of those miners. And not only that, we all still to this day have to suffer due to the Conservative government that over the last nine years has decided to take on and decimate everything else we have left. Our local authority budgets, our NHS, the fire service, the Tidway Fire Rescue have already stated that they've suffered thirty million pound rail terms cut since two thousand and ten, and some of our conservative councillors even had to shiverfully add the audacity to go on the Heron and Farthing Lakeside Facebook page and put the blame for this at local Labour councillors. You should be standing up your own government's austerity policy, not cowering behind it on social media. But ironically, after everything I've already said tonight, Madam Mayor, our police force, twenty thousand officers lost since two thousand and ten from our communities. The miners all mistake the police were on the wrong side, and will come for you next. Nearly ten years of Conservative government prompted progress by the Limp Doms to help them, they haven't been wrong. Every generation has to suffer and fight the same battles over and over again, with attacks on the working class, poor, the weak and the old, all inevitable with the Conservative government in power. But there's one thing they can take from us, and that's the love and compassion for family, communities and people. In two thousand and seven, Madam Mayor, I lost my old mum, and I know if she was still with us today, we can see what was happening, she would remind me of all those stories I grew up with, and still say, "We'll never forget what they did to us." Never forgive and never forget. I would like to say a special thank you tonight to the Orgreave Truth and Justice Campaign, who are represented by John and Beverley, for their dedication and commitment for a full public inquiry and answers that so many people deserve. I'm assured that tonight, the North remembers. And before I finish, Madam Mayor, I just want to end with a quote from Tony Benn, that I feel is just as important a day as it was in nineteen eighty-four during the miners' strike. Progress can always be made with the two flames that will always burn within the human heart, and that's the flavour of anger against injustice and the flavour of hope, we can build a better world. Let's start by giving those brave miners and their families the long overdue justice they deserve, and maybe in the not so distant future now, we can finally participate in political support. And I urge all members to support this motion tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Johnston. Does anyone have any amendments to this motion? Can I please take names of anyone who would wish to speak to the motion? Thank you councillor Hodson.
Thank you, Mayor Sunderland. I will speak briefly, I thought Kevin Johnson spoke very well, making quite vivid the events of that day in nineteen eighty-four, and certainly to my mind, the story was reminiscent of Hillsborough, a campaign, of course, led by the public, which led to a very revealing and troubling public inquiry quite recently, and on that basis, I think the Liberal Democratic group would certainly support the calls for a public inquiry, and will be supporting the motion, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Ramtree?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to speak on this motion. I would like to thank my neighbouring ward colleagues, councillors Johnston and Cunningham, for bringing this motion to council. I wish also to commend the Orgreave Truth and Justice Campaign for their passion and commitment to ensuring what happened that day is not forgotten, and for their continued pursuit of justice. I am the proud granddaughter of a miner, I grew up in a mining community and was a teenager during the miners' strike. During this time, I witnessed my friends, neighbours and family stand up to be counted, unite and support, defend jobs, defend working conditions and defend the very communities we lived in. This time of my life affirmed my political values and sense of social justice that is still carried to this day, and I will never, as long as I live, forget the contempt with which the Thatcher government treated our mining communities. What happened at Orgreave resonated throughout those communities and left a legacy of mistrust that remains to this day. It is heartbreaking that over thirty years later, there is still no justice and no one held accountable for the actions which took place at Orgreave. As elected representatives, we must speak truth to power, and that truth is that it utterly shameful that in over thirty years, justice has not been achieved at Orgreave. I urge every single one of you in this chamber to recognise that Orgreave deserves truth and justice and vote in favour of this motion.
Thank you very much councillor Ramtree. Councillor Portes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully support the justice of Orgreave by
I fully support the justice for all the orgreave miners, and I think councillor Johnson has presented a compelling argument, and I fully support that. Madam Mayor, most people know that I worked in the mining industry for a number of years. It started with the ENCA and then the British Coal Corporation. And I remember the strikes in nineteen seventy-two and nineteen seventy-four that I was involved with. The strike in nineteen eighty-four to eighty-five was an absolute horrendous strike. I've seen some of the actions of everyone that took part in that strike was absolutely devastating to me as a young engineer, chief engineer. One of the colonies that was primed to be closed. There was twenty colonies decided to be closed. At that time, there was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand miners came out on strike because of the twenty colonies to be closed. Hardship and violence was part of it, and that was thrust upon the miners themselves. I mean, it was absolutely disgraceful the way they were treated through at that period. I was in senior management, British Association of Colony Management. I was one of the executives on the North East. And we tried our best at what we could do, and our hands were tied at that particular time. But I remember in Hurley when I worked, every day we used to, and it's a secret, you can't tell anybody, we used to take a bucket full of coal down at the pick gates, and we used to drop it off for the lads to keep the fire burning. And you know, within half an hour, that five or ten ton of coal used to disappear. No idea how those braziers could burn that amount of coal in such a short time. No idea what happened to that. What I could never understand was why a government would want to close down a very healthy, productive mining industry and then close it down eventually in ninety-two, and then continue to import coal into this country. That's madness. It's politics. It's economics. Crazy. And you know, this is what they do. I was one of those that marched in London to try to prevent this. The miners' strike in the eighty-four was when we went down there. And then you know, I never say any, Madam Mayor, I never ever say any of our Tories marching for anything. It seems to always be the socialists, the Labour Party, who go out and we go around and we march to try and save things. And it appears for some reason that our Tory friends, they just want to close things down. They want to blame the poor working man for all the problems in this world. And they started this with the miners in nineteen seventy-two and seventy-four under the Eighth Government, if you remember. The miners' pay in those days was absolutely atrocious compared to other industries. I fully support the justice for the Orgreave miners. It's absolutely essential that we have a public inquiry for the Orgreave incident on the eighteenth of June nineteen eighty-four, and I fully support this motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Portles. Councillor Atkinson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm proud to stand here tonight to support this motion. I was born in eighty-four, and my dad was a mechanic at Weemouth. I wasn't old enough to remember the dark days of my dad on the picket line or my parents' burning shoes to keep warm. I do have the Russian doll though that was sent to me from the Russian miners, who sent Christmas presents to show unity and support with our men, and that's something I treasure to this day. Speaking to my dad about the strike and knowing the sacrifices he made shaped my formative years, my politics and my ethics. What happened at Orgreave is a national disgrace, and Amber Rudd's response to an inquiry simply showed that a Tory leopard never changes his spots. An inquiry in Orgreave is needed. It needs to highlight the brutality used and shed disdain of the working man. My dad was locked out of Weemouth in March nineteen eighty-four, when hundreds of men took to the picket line to peacefully and lawfully protest. The brutality that met those men was shattering. Military personnel dressed as police officers acted no better than brawling thugs. The violence they rained down was quite simply shocking. But the beaten's weren't all the miners endured. Men were sacked for picketing, others faced bankruptcy, others lost their homes and their families, an unjust price to pay. The eighty-four strike was the first time we saw armoured vans and riot shields in Sunderland. The armour was brought in by the Met Police, who were shipped up to our coalfields and paid huge overtimes for the privilege of beating our residents. A pastime they relished, but not as much as the joy they took in gauding the picket line with their payslips to show them how much money they were making by doling out their beaten's. Miners worked just on the picket line to save their jobs, but attempting to save their communities and our futures. I'm proud that I'm from mining heritage. I'm proud of my dad. It's sad to say though, that the Tory party are still targeting those that they deem to be the scourge of society, the homeless, the vulnerable and those who can't fight back. But we can take up the fight, we can campaign for Orgreave and all the other people the Tories want to try and erase from history. Like everyone on this side, I'm proud to support this motion and call on the Tories in this chamber to repent for Thatcher's sins and support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I respect this motion. And like everybody in this chamber tonight from this side, certainly, we all have mining members in our families. My grandfather worked in mines until a rockfall. Basically, he took away his job. He didn't have fantastic wages, didn't get fantastic compensation. He later died of lung cancer, which, you know, may or may not have been down to the fact that he worked underground and breathed the dust. I think, Madam Mayor, that when a state comes to the point where it has to use its law enforcement agencies against the public, that's the day you know the state's failed. It's happened before with the Conservative Party. It will not happen again with the Conservative Party, and I plead with them, support this motion today. You're Conservatives, yes, we accept and we will forgive you for that. However, you represent people in a city that has a long, strong mining heritage, and you owe it to them people to support this motion. Madam Mayor, we've seen the shipyards go, we've seen the coal yards go and the pits all go. And to be honest, there is, it's almost a cleansing. Anything that has a strong union base, the Conservatives will attack. They'll cleanse it. They'll move people out. They'll move us around the country. Norman Tett, get on your bike. You couldn't afford the petrol for a car like they could, you know, so we had to use the bikes. But Madam Mayor, I think that Orgreave was exceptional in its time. It was the clearest state that the people of this country, the workers of this country, just didn't matter to a Conservative government. If you ever go and watch the Billy Elliot story, we take the singing and dancing out, there's a lot of good heart on this truth in there. It's a player that I find really reminiscent of so many of the beaten's and the attacks that were done by the police force. They didn't need a excuse, they didn't need a reason. It was pretty much a foregone conclusion that that was what was going to happen. I think that we now owe a debt of thanks to our mining communities. We owe a debt of thanks to the people who are continuing this campaign. And we do now need to see this Conservative government either give this genuine opportunity for an inquiry. And if it's an inquiry and you're convinced you haven't got blood on your hands, you've got nothing to worry about. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Oliver.
Madam Mayor, first of all, congratulations to councillor Johnston for his excellent delivery of the motion. I must say, I have great sympathy for many of the things you said about the miners' strike. Like councillor Atkinson, I received a present aged twelve from a striking miner that had also come from the Soviet Union. I remember it very well. It was a football that was slightly misshapen. But I do remember getting that from a striking miner. As they say, it was many, many years ago. I was only twelve. Madam Mayor, there's absolutely, I think, no doubt and has been found in the inquiry the IPCC did conduct after the South Yorkshire Police, in fact, referred themselves to it, that there was evidence of excessive force, assault, perjury and perversion of courses of justice by some officers of the South Yorkshire Police at that time. And that is something that is absolutely inexcusable then and would be inexcusable today. I think we need to be careful about making links with Hillsborough. It was the same police force, but that is not a concrete certainty that what happened at Hillsborough would not have happened but for Orgreave. Despite what I've said, Madam Mayor, I do have two concerns about the motion. The first is whether an inquiry would be possible at this stage. Councillor Johnston did refer to it as a miscarriage of justice, but remember that no miner was actually sent to jail or killed, and there were no casualties in it. So I think by saying a miscarriage of justice in legal terms, then that is not certain. And of course, it was very different to what happened at Hillsborough. And it is, of course, a Conservative government that brought Hillsborough to a close. A Conservative government that brought the Hillsborough to a close. Since nineteen eighty-four, Madam Mayor, there have been very significant changes in policing, in the oversight of policing, in the way in which complaints are dealt with, the creation of the Crown Prosecution Service in nineteen eighty-six, the strengthening of that, the two thousand and four Police Complaints Authority, and then later the Independent Police Complaints Commission, which of course is, I think, still working through the material related to Orgreave to see if it is actually relevant to the Hillsborough criminal investigations, which of course, I must say, are ongoing. And that does affect my judgement of this motion, that those criminal proceedings against officers at Hillsborough have not yet concluded, therefore they are subdued safe. Another point I would make, of course, and to be honest, the Labour Party keeps doing this. We have had thirteen years of a Labour government after Orgreave. Thirteen years in which you could have had an inquiry. Thirteen years in which you had the House of Commons packed full of MPs who were miners. David Blunkett, the Home Secretary, said no. Vera Baird was solicitor general and an MP for the North East at the time. She is now campaigning for an inquiry, but at the time when she was in Parliament, she did not succeed in getting her own party to bring it about. Therefore, I would be voting against the motion.
Thank you, councillor Oliver. Councillor Dixon.
I've got to say, this is probably the toughest debate that I've ever been in since I became a councillor quite a few years ago. The reason being that I actually had quite close contacts with the mining communities for many years because I used to have the pleasure of collecting rents from retired miners for about seven years. Three mornings a week, and during that time, I honestly met the nicest people that I've ever met in my life. They were so kind, so friendly, and they were nice people. Not many of them liked Arthur Skargill mine, that was nineteen seventy-six to about nineteen eighty-two, and they were concerned about the direction the mining union was going. But from a personal angle, meeting those people, I mean, it wasn't the most pleasant of jobs being at the bottom of Victoria Street in Shotten Colliery at quarter to nine in the morning in November, getting soaking wet, but a little bit of cup of tea, ten or twelve doors up the road and a nice warm coal fire. So I really am struggling a bit tonight because of the type of people who I met. And I used to play a lot of sport and played against mining villagers, people. The nicest people in the world I've ever met, apart from my colleagues in my life. I do worry though about the motion. I mean, he's a report from a reporter. Police were being attacked with bricks, slivers of glass and containers of fuel. Cars were rolled downhill whilst policemen are ignited to make a flaming barricade, while wooden stakes have been placed in lines to prevent horse charging. That was from The Guardian, where I probably read it. So it wasn't The Daily Mail. But then you had the other side of it from a miner who got arrested immediately for no particular reason. And he was in a police station at Sheffield before the confrontation, and he watched as others, miners, approached him with blood pouring down their faces. Medical attention was held until it was demanded from solicitors. And of course, there was the cavalry charge as well. And I'm just wondering, you know, speaking to councillor Johnson, and what councillor Oliver said, it was a very emotional speech and you could tell every word was meant. I just wonder what can be achieved by bringing all this up? Because you're going to get the police's version, and then you're going to get the, you know, your version, so to speak. And is that not something that would upset members of your family? Bringing it back into the arena of that sort of thing? I think only you could answer that question for me, but that's something I say with the best of intentions. What could be achieved? Because there have been negative remarks made about the conduct of the miners. Well, that's a fact. I'm not saying it's right, I'm just saying it would be mentioned. I'm not here either to defend the South Yorkshire Police, quite frankly.
Sorry, I'm doing the best. I've said I can't accept it.
But don't distract us. I'm not here to defend the leadership of the South Yorkshire Police and whoever else was in their ranks. Their track record during that era, it could have been some good officers, obviously, has not been very well judged by history. And indeed, it was disgraceful, quite frankly. And we've got issues in Rotherham between ninety-seven and two thousand and thirteen involving council, Labour council leaders and council officials and the police of those poor young girls who were looked after. So the South Yorkshire Police at that time, I mean, there's a, if you ever want to really get sad, look at this case of Stephen Kizko, K-I-S-Z-K-O, and see how that poor man was stitched up by the police, by South Yorkshire Police in the seventies, and it was disgraceful. It was one of the worst examples of miscarriage of justice in this country. And as councillor Oliver said, the Conservative government has actually been very good on inquiries. We've had Theresa May at Hillsborough, we had David Cameron with Northern Ireland. The best the Labour Party could do was to hook an inquiry about Dr Kelly's suicide, possible suicide, which even the independent called a whitewatch. And then, of course, there was this Chilcot report, which was, you know, about the Iraq War, which was in two thousand and nine, published in two thousand and sixteen. So as a party, you've really had to be brought dragging yourselves to inquiries. And I would like to know, as councillor Oliver has said, why didn't you do anything about it from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and ten? When you had a majority of three hundred, I suppose, whatever it was. Sorry? Yeah, no. Yeah, I mean, you had the vanguard of the working class, Tony Blair as your prime minister, you know. And then you had Gordon Brown after that. So in two thousand and twelve, I noticed on Google, that was when yours started. Why didn't you do something about it before? Just asking. I'm asking a question. It's a fair question. It's a fair question. It's a fair question. So, where am I? I'm going to think about this over the next ten minutes or so while you're talking. I really am. I'm very grateful to my leader, councillor Oliver, to allow me to do that. I'm very grateful to my leader councillor Oliver to allow me to do that. And it's something which is very close to my heart, the mining community. But I do concern myself about what good it will do in relation to opening up old wounds within the mining community, within the country even. And that is something that I am a little bit concerned about. I have been disappointed with the politicising tonight by you towards the end, you excellent start, and councillor Atkinson. I don't have to repent over anything. No, I don't, not as a person. My best man is Jewish, you repent over having an anti-Semitic leader? You know what I mean? Don't, don't, it's patronising, and it's, yeah, and it's patronising, because I really do object to that. And had you stuck to the miners and the police, I would have had the slightest trouble in supporting you tonight. But unfortunately, we got a bit political and that was disappointing. So thank you very much for listening, it was an attempt to bring some constructive argument from this side, and maybe I achieved it.
Thank you very much councillor Dixon. Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'd like to start off by saying it's a privilege to be second in the motion tonight. Actually, it's also a privilege to, I must say, have colleagues and follow in the footsteps of good colleagues like councillor Johnston. I do consider myself privileged in this chamber, Madam Mayor, not only to be a councillor and represent my community, but to work alongside somebody that has such profound values and experiences. I'm proud of him for what he does, I'm proud of him for saying that tonight, and I think our whole community will be proud of him for that wonderful speech as well, Madam Mayor. So I'd just like to put that on that note too. I'd also like to thank other speakers such as councillor Porthouse, councillor Atkinson, especially councillor Rantry as well, for talking about their personal experiences too, and any kind of links that they've had to the strike as well. Obviously, it's well documented and it was great to hear from also. My thanks as well, Madam Mayor, would I think readily go as well to the representatives of the Allgrave Truth and Justice Campaign that are here tonight, they've campaigned tirelessly, Madam Mayor, on an issue that I think really does matter and is of real public interest. And I think that it would be great tonight if our council, Sunderland, could join with our North East colleague Durham, for example, and add its name to the list of councils calling for an inquiry tonight as well. I'd also like to thank representatives from other groups that are here tonight as well, notably Jack and Derek Cockridge, residents of ours from the Appleton Banner Group, also people that worked down in Waymouth Colliery, and people from the Sunderland Trades Union Council tonight as well for showing their support as well on the way, Madam Mayor. Now, Madam Mayor, many others have spoken tonight about their own personal links to the event at Allgrave, and there's been little shortage of that. I thank them for sharing their important information on such a matter of public importance. My own link to Allgrave, Madam Mayor, is also a personal one. I've got close friends and relatives that were at Allgrave, Madam Mayor, and experienced the events at the Allgrave Courtworks. My own uncle travelled down to Allgrave with friends and colleagues, but little could have prepared him for the events that were about to unfold. He's recalled to me the unfair police treatment, the use of unnecessary force, and his memories of police charging down on their position. Some recall those events, and some have even embraced this chamber, Madam Mayor. Indeed, my colleague councillor Johnston mentioned our predecessor, former city councillor Bob Heron. Bob was there when the police charged, and he, like many others, ran from the truncheons and shields that were charging them down. Eventually, an Alsatian caught Bob and tore his leg open. He still has the scars to this day. I wonder how many others do, Madam Mayor. Bob has memories of the local hospital, where he and many others were treated, in conditions that he can only compare to that of a war zone. And for all that Allgrave was an injustice in practice, injustice was also shown in Allgrave's portrayal. Studies, notably from the Glasgow Media Group, at the time have shown that the news coverage some days later from the BBC and ITN was massively skewed in favour of the position of the scoreboard and the government. As all our miners recall being charged out by sometimes angered riot police, the news depicted a scene whereby miners were seen as charging the police line, and the riot police were painted as victims. Of course, it's been the Allgrave Riot Trial staged in 1985, where strikers' lawyers such as Michael Mansfield had argued that BBC footage had unfairly influenced public opinion against the cause of the miners. To date, no details of any internal BBC investigation have ever been made public. Other studies from the BBC, sorry, other studies of the BBC and ITN have led many to conclude in its choice of language, of images and film editing techniques, that the evening news had sought to portray a heavily biased representation of what had occurred. However, the BBC seemed to have cottoned on to this fact straight away. A study by the Sheffield academic and someone I've got a lot of time for, Tony Harkup, has found that the following day, the then BBC Director General said at an internal meeting that media coverage of Allgrave, quote, "might not have been impartial". An inquiry, Madam Mayor, would not only provide closure for the friends and family of those brave men at Allgrave, but it would provide closure for all of the men, and yes, sometimes women, that occupied picket lines across our communities and for the wider public. Miners, their families and their communities need closure. We could perhaps begin by looking at the supposed ministerial instructions for the police, to use a, quote, "more vigorous interpretation of their duties" in their line of duty, or even as Michael Crick recorded in his diaries at the time, "the NCB providing the news desks with information of the number of miners returning to work, serving to undermine the strike in what they span as the, quote, 'drift back to work'". There is also the case to say that if other inquiries on matters of public concern have been investigated, why can't the cause of the miners at Allgrave? In his opening line for the BBC panorama, sorry, the BBC programme Inside Out aired in 2012, the journalist Dan Johnson said, quote, "what happened at Allgrave has been left as a footnote in history. This, of course, is exacerbated now by a government that refuses to hold an inquiry. I'm proud that a Labour Government will." Of course, the malt, I'll get on to that. Of course, the maltreatment of the miners by the media and the establishment is sometimes restricted to Allgrave. It actually happened across the country, not least in my community in Appleton. In my community, people were worried about their mortgages. People were worried about their families and their communities. People pulled together in organisations such as Appleton Miners' Wife Support Group, which councillor Heron, now a home ward councillor, was secretary of. And they saw the desperation that was witnessed firsthand. Most of all, it showed what our community and our people in the coalfields are made of: passion, pride, solidarity. The Tories try to crush the enemy within, but I've got a message for councillor Oliver, and that's that they never have and they never will. Of course, just in dealing with councillor Oliver's comments, which of course, I relish quite a lot, in terms of talking about the past Labour Government, I wasn't around to experience Allgrave, of course, Madam Mayor, but I was around to experience the events of the last Labour Government. I can assure councillor Oliver that I owe my success in life to that government and its record, and I'm not about to shy away from that government and its record either. Investment in the health service, the minimum wage, the minimum, the minimum wage, the minimum wage reducing child poverty, Madam Mayor, that's the record of my last Labour Government, that's the record I have. Of course, returning to a notice of motion, Madam Mayor, which actually, I've been previously mentioning as to the radicalism in the National Union of Mine Workers, and obviously, I think that on one side, there appears to be a very one-sided account of the wish particularly to have a strike. In fact, I found a quote recently which reads, quote, "I was going to have as much to say as possible in the selection of that day", which of course, means the selection of the day of the outbreak of the strike. But that didn't come from the National Union of Mine Workers, it didn't come from the Labour Party, it didn't come from anybody but Ian McGregor, Madam Mayor, in his autobiography. And we can't absolve the Liberal Party, Madam Mayor, for all their support of us tonight and love our colleagues in the Liberal Party very much, for whose leader at the time claimed that a strike was nakedly political and not industrial. It was more than political and industrial. It was about families and jobs and communities, and certain members of our political class would do well to remember that. As my colleague has previously mentioned, the Tories are frankly at it again, they sold the family silver and now they're back for the rest. People in my community turn up, Madam Mayor, to ward surgeries, worried about universal credit and the housing crisis that affects our country. We see services cut to the bone so that the Conservatives can have tax breaks to big business. We see an explosion of zero hours contracts and other forms of insecure work, especially in my community. This is meant to be a future of opportunity, but it looks like the only opportunity that the Tories intend to create is for Boris Johnson to become Prime Minister. Madam Mayor, I'm very pleased to say that there is a different way. We could have a Labour Government that would invest in things like education, creating a national education service, and abolishing free schools and academies, a practical step towards education.
Councillor, would you stick to Allgrave?
That's absolutely fine, that's absolutely fine. But Madam Mayor, most importantly, what we would do is we would hold an inquiry finally into Allgrave. And on that premise, Madam Mayor, I would encourage all members in this chamber to support the motion.
Well done councillor Cunningham, thank you very much indeed. Councillor Johnson, you have a right to reply.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you to councillor Hodgson for their support in this notice of motion tonight, and also from the councillors on this side of the chamber who have also spoke passionately and will be supporting the motion for their contributions. In response to the points made by councillor Oliver regarding the inquiry, there were casualties, and there was casualties long after that day, because there was an injustice that happened. The role of the police is to maintain law and order and to protect members of the public, not to be instigated of it. The last Labour Government, if I was older than them, I would have been saying the same thing as I'd said tonight, and there should have been one then. The next Labour Government had promised, in their manifesto, there will be an inquiry into Allgrave. And if I'd said myself and councillor Cunningham, we would have said the same thing if it was fifteen years ago, as what we said tonight. Councillor Dixon, I sense that you have that faith within your heart, that you want the vote with the miners on this. Unfortunately, it was politically led, the police didn't have it within their power to attack the miners. There was something in the background that was making them do that and act in that way. So it was politically led by the Conservative government at the time, and just like your story, the truth hurts, I'm afraid. But if we can give some truth and closure and some justice to those brave families and those miners and what happened at that time, then I think we should support the motion, and let's get that on the move and have that closure for them. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Johnson, thank you very much indeed. We'll now vote on the motion.
Madam Mayor, there are fifty-six votes in favour, one abstention and four votes against, and therefore the motion is carried.
Thank you all very much indeed for the respect you gave to each other during that motion. We'll just wait a moment until the people leave the public gallery. Thank you very much. The third notice of motion tonight is the condition of the city. I call upon councillor Oliver to read and move the motion.
This council recognises the frustration of residents in the city at the condition of the city centre compared to other towns and cities, and resolves to bring forward ambitious plans to breathe new life into it in 2019.
Thank you. Councillor Wood, do you second the motion?
I do second the motion, Madam Mayor, confirm that I wish to speak as well, thank you.
Councillor Oliver, would you wish to speak to the motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. In tribute to our leader of the council, who I know maintains his real loyalties north of the border, I would just like to tell him about a recent trip I enjoyed to Dundee. Yesterday, in fact, Madam Mayor, the Duke and Duchess of Cambridge opened the Victoria and Albert Museum in that city as part of a one billion pound investment, and it has already attracted more visitors than the entire population of Sunderland. Not, of course, that I'm suggesting that we send councillor Miller back north of the border, though I understand one or two people in the city might prove as that. It is, it is of course, a mid-sized, post-industrial, riverside city that has moved on from jam, jute and journalism and is now one of the top places to visit. The point being that things can be done to revive life in town and city centres. Yes, they are under pressure from online shopping, from out-of-town retail with free parking, but Dundee, as one example of many, shows what can be done. Other city centres too, locally, Stockton has been re-energised through a heritage trail which has boosted retail and visitors and entertainment in that town. South Shields, of course, has its very, very successful The Word, which has shown that people will use libraries when they are exciting and multi-use. The motion this evening, therefore, is about the detailed plans for the city centre, not so much the core strategy and the broader plans, which of course, this group voted against. Madam Mayor, the Jimsey Report, the last report into retail concluded that really, in many city centres, there is actually too much retail, and that city centres need to be more varied, that we need to expand housing. They are perhaps moving towards becoming more like American cities, with small central business districts and vibrant suburbs. It would be a problem in this city, of course, though, because you'll remember the now infamous quote from John Prescott when he visited the city, and he said, "in Sunderland, they will develop their city centre when they decide where it is", because of course, we have town centres out in Houghton and Washington and other places. But Madam Mayor, we do need to be moving towards a wider offer in our city centre. It's fair to say that many of the residents look at other cities like Newcastle and other towns like Gateshead and Durham and feel that we could do better. We need to be looking at a wider offer in terms of housing, more housing in the city centre, we could of course, convert retail units, a more concentration of quality shops. I know that in the West Midlands, the mayor there, Andy Street, has talked about smaller retail areas of better shops. Of course, there is a role for people to work, for business, for entertainment and for food and drink. In short, to have smaller city centres but better. Or as they put it in The Times, "more fun and fewer shops". Madam Mayor, there has of course, been some progress in Sunderland city centre over the past few years, that's fair to say, and to give credit to everyone who's been involved in that. The standout features, of course, the old fire station around it, the Dun Cow and the Peacock, though I understand the beer is a little bit expensive for some people in there. The emerging seafront, of course, more events, sporting and cultural, though that doesn't of course, mean that I support the Spice Girls, that's it. Of course, in the past, there has been a cultural regeneration in the 1990s and the 2000s, especially in the parks, Mowbray Park and others. And the expansion of the university, of course, has greatly boosted the city, and isn't it good to see the university climbing up the international rankings of academic institutions in recent years, something that will boost the city? Especially, of course, the announcement that we will have a medical school specifically aimed at pupils from backgrounds where they haven't gone to university before, so specifically aimed at people in this city. But we need, of course, to make some of the effort. The last thing we want is to train doctors and then for them to go and live elsewhere. There have of course, been massive failures, though, that people are very acutely aware. The volk site, now councillor Miller of course blames Brexit for the volk site, I know it might seem like it, Brexit. The Vaux site has been going on for twenty years, it might seem like Brexit has been going on for twenty years as well, but I can assure you it hasn't quite. Sunnyside, of course, where former MP Chris Mullin, of course, said that the plans were far too elaborate, and he may, of course, be proven right, though, of course, he's now more interested in his garden in Northumberland. Leaving, of course, a hollowed-out city centre, though rounded, Nissan, I am, Docksford, more prosperous parts in the suburbs. It does, of course, need to be done through the private sector to be realistic. The Vaux site should, as a resident of the city emailed me this week, be the engine room of regeneration, be a public, sorry, not, as it seems to be likely, a public sector hub. We've held out for two decades on that, are they then going to give the taxpayers the bill? It should be a bustling private sector anchor of the city. We're trying our best, Counselor Miller, watch this face, watch this face. Never mind trips to China, you need a trip to Brussels. It does, we do, need to increase the private sector in Sunderland. If you look at the percentage of private sector jobs in the city centre of Leeds, it's forty-seven percent. In this city, it's only fifteen percent in private sector jobs in the city. And by the way, this is a little dig back at Centre for Cities, who weren't very helpful this week. The share of private sector jobs in the city actually went down nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and eight by five percent during the last Labour government. But, Madam Mayor, it's very easy just to turn around and say, 'Well, there isn't money for this'. I have to say, I have some sympathy with the timing, but, of course, it was the council's choice to turn down the offers on the Vaux site and wait for so long. But there has been money available, there's been £20 million from the Conservative government to purchase the Vaux site, £80 million from the Northern Sire, and, of course, a total of about 1.5 billion of overall investment into the city. Likewise, the council itself, it does have choices to make about its own capital spending. If you look at the capital budget, a very, very large amount of it, tens of millions, is earmarked to put this civic centre on the Vaux site. If you spent that on something else, you could probably easily afford a leisure centre in the city centre or the seafront, purchase of property, like a lot of councils have actually just gone out and purchased property in their city centres to boost them, or, of course, you can subsidise retailers as well using those budgets. We do, therefore, Madam Mayor, to conclude, need to improve our leisure facilities, need to be in the city centre or along the seafront, we need probably a landmark attraction as well, just as Dundee has its Victorian Albert Museum, and, of course, Middlesbrough has a snow centre coming on track as well. The role of a landmark attraction to actually get people in is very, very important. We also need to be more proactive, absentee landlords, a lot of people comment on buildings of historic nature in the city centre that have trees growing out of the gutters, nothing much is going on, then you find out it's owned by some tax exile in Lutsemurk or something like that, which, not necessarily all Tories, but maybe some of them are, but anyway, I don't condone them buying property and leaving it to go to rack and ruin. Another point that can be made, and say again, another resident after this was sort of publicising in Sunderland, emailed me, said, 'You know, yes, you can do all these things, but look, the Labour council brought in a public space protection order'. That's important as well, so that people feel safe in the city, so that they are not bothered, so that it is an enjoyable experience. We also, not just about resources, but we also have vast tracts of land along the riverside and the port that could, of course, be developed for housing and business. The port itself, to conclude, is a very good example. A lot of people now commenting on how the port is doing better, and if you look at it from the glass centre, how you can see a vibrant, bustling port with lots going on, which is the way we think the city centre should be. Thank you, Mrs.
Thank you very much, Counselor Oliver. Counselor Wood, did you wish to speak now?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
A town or city centre and a high street are the heart of a community. They represent the health and prospects of that community. And, of course, our city centre and the city centres up and down the country are facing immense challenges. We see tired shops, vacant units, rundown, often public spaces. It's already been forecast, Madam Mayor, for the country as a whole, that during the current year, the current calendar year, 175,000 further high street jobs will go and 23,000 high street shops will close. That's the immensity of the problem that Sunderland shares with other cities. And when I knock on doors, a vote is in my ward, there is likely to express concern about the state of the city centre, as they are about anything else. Town and city centres are deeply symbolic, and they matter a great deal to people. Now, I always tried to shop in Sunderland. It's not always possible, and the two last orders that I placed, I placed online. But, but, I did collect them at the local high street branch of the chain involved. So new ways of shopping, Madam Mayor, don't necessarily need to make the high street redundant. Now, the core strategy, to which Counselor Oliver has referred, does speak of a vibrant, well-supported town and city centre where people meet and shop. It acknowledges the important aspect of a healthy and local economy, and it talks about that vibrant, well-supported town and indeed district centres, but by 2033, that's rather a long time ahead, Madam Mayor. We'd like to see something happening before then. The city centre, as Counselor Oliver has said, has been in decline for some time, and it's not been helped, as he said, effectively by delays in developing the Vaux site. I suppose we could sit back and let that slow decline continue, but it would not be a responsible option, Madam Mayor, would it, for anyone, anyone who cares about Sunderland and the future of the city? We do need a strategy which will breathe new life into the city centre, and it must be ambitious, as the motion says, and it requires leadership and investment, both from the public and the private sector. I think that we should be taking or seeking to take advantage of the future high streets, for example. Now, £25 million won't revive the city centre, but it can help improve in the appearance, for example, of Forest Street and High Street, and perhaps regrettably, we need to add Blackford Street as well for obvious reasons, to that list, Madam Mayor. And we have to accept that city centres and high streets have to change. Traditional retailers need to evolve to differentiate themselves from online, focusing perhaps on more personal tasks or face-to-face experiences that they can't get from the screen. Specialist retailers, mixed-use spaces, local shops, new concepts, perhaps we're not aware of as yet, are all needed. And as Counselor Oliver said, we need to look beyond retail. Thriving city centres must offer very much more than shopping, and successful plans will make people want to come and spend time in city centres where they don't seem to want to do that now. We've got to embrace the concept of urban living. We need more people living in the city centre and along the riverside, in homes within walking distances of workplaces. We need to repurpose surplus business premises. The city centre needs to be a focus for public services, a focal point, it is a focal point for public transport, and it's a natural place for health and other services, skills training and career advice. We want it to be green and clean, it needs to be if it's going to attract people, and it must be a place that people enjoy being. And yes, safe, dedicated cycle and walking routes, part of this, with lots of green space, elegant street design and furniture. An attractive city centre needs to be safe and secure with good lighting, CCTV, proactive policing, the list goes on. It needs to be easy to get to by public and private transport, Madam Mayor, and that includes making it easy and relatively cheap for cars to park within the city centre. We've had a debate in the past about car parking in the city, Madam Mayor, and don't propose to prolong that debate tonight, but no doubt we'll return to it. Technology changes will only accelerate it, and we must embrace them, including picking up options for online deliveries, I've made that point before. And yes, we need strong local leadership, and I hope that Counselor Miller is sort of straining at the leash, wanting to provide it, actually being elected to do it, and we shall judge him by his success and due course, and no doubt his party colleagues will do the same. We need council master planning here, quite clearly, I think. We need the coordination bid, for example, with this improvement district, we're pleased to see that that's going to continue, and it seems to have fairly strong support on the part of its members, and we need landlords working together, I think, according to Counselor Oliver. But the best city centre with the most joined-up city centre. And again, we need to retain the local character. And we also, and I can make the point, Madam Mayor, need a fair tax system, and that's not entirely within the gift of this council, I readily accept, but we can make representations, and RFPs can make representations elsewhere insofar as we need to. Traditional and online retailers should, in my view, be treated equivalently. Some form of digital services tax for online operations is needed, just as we need lower business rates. So to conclude, Madam Mayor, in my view, we need a dynamic new approach with ambitious thinking. The future is not just retail. Our town centres need housing, workplaces, public services, and leisure facilities to make them thrive. I'm happy to support the second motion.
Thank you very much indeed, Counselor Wood. Are there any amendments? Can I please take names of people who would like to speak? Counselor Kelly? Housework? I've got the leader, Counselor Kelly, councillor for Housework, yes? No, no? Counselor Wood? Leader, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Oliver, Counselor Wood, I'm quite happy to support your notice of motion, as I'm sure the Labour group will be as well, because any local authority worth its salt has to be ambitious for its city centre and the city in its broadest sense. What does surprise me, gentlemen, is the tone of the notice of motion and your debate comments there, like you've only just thought of it, and that you're lecturing us on what we need to be doing regarding regenerating the city centre and the city in its broadest terms. This Labour group's been quite active over several years in regenerating the city centre and the city in its broadest terms. Now, the old chestnut of the Vaux site always comes up, but, be honest, we didn't own it. Tesco wanted it, and if we'd put a white box the size of the Vaux site on that site, we'd have destroyed Fawcett Street, the bridges, and everything else that we had as a city centre at that time. So it could never be done because the outcome for the city would have been terrible, we'd have not had a weak city centre, we'd have had no city centre. Now, the future of Sunderland as a city and the city centre, reviving the fortunes of the city centre is a top priority for this council. Counselor Oliver, you're absolutely right to prioritise it as such. Like others in the key cities network, Sunderland has felt the effects of the retail sector, of online shopping, and the long-term decline in professional, financial, and business service employment in traditional city centre locations. Also mentioning that because our workforce in the 70s and 80s was based in the city centre supporting the shipyards, and that was whittled out by the Thatcher government, the council did indeed replace those jobs, but replaced those jobs to the west of the city centre in Nissan, in Washington, on Docksford Park, in Rainton Bridge, leaving us with a weak city centre that we have now got to grips with and are dealing with fixing. City centres need to adapt and diversify, building on assets such as universities, developing the cultural offer, encouraging the growth of creative and tech businesses, and improving the quality of the built environment. We also need to encourage more people to choose to live in the heart of the city. Everything that you were talking about, that you think we should be doing, we're doing. I'm just surprised you haven't read any of the documents that tell you about this. There are key themes of the city centre review which are being commissioned by the Chief Executive and the Executive Director of Economy in place. The first stage of that review has focused on establishing a medium-to-long-term vision, building on what we're already doing, and I will come to that, for the city centre and identifying the priorities for action. A report is being prepared by officers and will be presented to the Cabinet in the spring on this, and the second stage will focus on the production of a phased ten-year implementation plan, and this will be completed for approval by September of this year. The goals of the emerging strategy include doubling the permanent population of the city centre, increasing employment in the city centre by 50%, especially in high-wage, high-skill occupations. Achieving these goals will drive a corresponding increase in food-forward expenditure, restoring a sense of purpose and vitality in the city centre, and helping to sustain shops, food and drink outlets, and a lively evening economy. Whilst those goals are undoubtedly challenging, we consider this to be the most auspicious time for change in many years. The Beem, the first new building on the Vaux site, will be completed in the spring of this year, and proposals are well advanced for the new city hall and public sector hub, and I know you don't like that term, Counselor Oliver, but that's what it's termed at the moment, though it may change, all right? On an adjoining site facing St Mary's Boulevard, and other key factors include the University of Sunderland's One Campus Master Plan, which aims to strengthen connections between the Chester Road and St Peter's Site through Keel Square and the Vaux site, the development due to start in spring of this year of the 8.2 million auditorium, which is a 700-seat performance venue, rehearsal and teaching space in the heart of our new music arts and cultural quarter, the completion due in spring of this year of a new access and mobility plan for the city centre, which will promote walking and cycling and rationalise vehicle movements, parking, and public transport. All the things you're talking about, we are doing. It's just like you've been in a fog and haven't seen any of it. So it does make me wonder if you, Oliver, did actually read your documents, and read the documents our officers painstakingly worked to prepare for you. Now, there will be more detail soon, but the headline features of the city centre vision and strategy will include the creation of a new central business district, including the Beem and the east end of the Vaux site, with the potential to expand into High Street West, establishing a civic and learning quarter around the new city hall, including a library which will be connected through Keel Square, the cultural quarter in the new city park, which is due for completion this year, the development of a garden community, a new residential neighbourhood with settlements at Vaux, Farringdon Row and Sheepfold, ranged around Galleys Guild, investment in the enabling infrastructure, including improved links between Vaux and Keel Square, High Street West, and the implementation of the One Campus Greenway with a new river crossing for pedestrians and cyclists. Is this not enough? Is this showing you that we're being aspirational and that this side of the chamber, we're actually getting on with delivering changes to the city centre and the city in its broadest sense? The first phase of the investment plan will focus on the north side of the city centre and Vaux, but we are also developing proposals for other areas, including Sunnyside and the Homeside Triangle, as well as an action plan to improve wayfinding, maintenance of the public realm, refuse collection, and street cleaning throughout the city centre. This action plan will improve the day-to-day experience of people visiting the city centre to work or shop and for our local residents. And I've had to cut this down and it's still three pages. Other developments include Keel Square Hotel. There is planning consent and a detailed design for a hotel on Keel Square. Commercial discussions are continuing with interested parties. Gilbridge House, Hayes Travel is creating a new head office, relocating staff from four separate offices across the city to this prominent site on Keel Square, and discussions are continuing about proposal to convert the former Gilbridge Priest Station into a hub for the creative and cultural industries. Our Heritage Action Zone, that status was granted in 2018 for an area which includes Fawcett Street, the east end of High Street West, and High Street East. This status enables private landlords to secure grant funding for the restoration of historic properties. Work has already started at 100 to 175 High Street West and Hutchinson's Building, which is Mackie's Corner. Bishop Wiermuth Conservation Area, the council secured 1.9 million from the Heritage Lottery Fund in 2018 to undertake a townscape heritage scheme within that conservation area. The five-year project will provide grant assistance to owners and tenants of historic buildings such as the Empire Theatre, enabling improvements to town park and support activities and events in that area. The City Hall Public Sector Hub, the planning application has been submitted and the business case will be discussed by Cabinet in spring of this year. The City Hall will symbolise the The City Hall will symbolise the regeneration of the city centre and in combination with the BEAM, help to attract private sector investment in the new central business district. I hope you're smiling councillor Oliver. Private sector, there you go. The Public Sector Hub will bring together the delivery of a range of public services on one site, improving the customer journey by making a range of services easier to navigate. Together for Children, the Youth Defending Team, Next Steps and Department of Working Pensions are all planning to move on to this site. A proper hub for people to come and get many things done in one easy journey. Central Station, and I'm so glad you mentioned Dundee, because they do have a beautiful museum, you're absolutely correct, but they've got a nicer railway station. And we've been speaking to them about how they got their railway station done. A detailed design is currently being prepared for a new concourse building to replace the current building at the south end of the station. The council annexes of committing capital funding for this project, which will include improved passenger facilities. An application to the Transforming Cities Fund has been made for additional funds. If the bid is successful, work will start in twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Officers have also been exploring the feasibility of creating a new northern entrance to the station to serve High Street West and the Vox site. Jackie White's Market. Refurbishment work is due to commence in spring twenty nineteen after full consultation with the staff, the stall holders on that site. And the Future High Streets Fund. You'll be glad to hear, Robert, that we have actually submitted a detailed business case to access that money. So the council is doing what it can to get its share of those funds to enable us to commence and do even more work, even more work than what I've already said, to continue to bring our twenty-first-century city centre offer to the residents of the city.
Leader?
You have the next thing, Madam Mayor?
Second motion. Thank you. I'm nearly finished, Madam Mayor.
So agreed?
In closing, I gently suggest the following reading material, which will enlighten you further councillor Oliver. Homework for the next council meeting. The Sunderland Transforming Our City: The Three-Six-Nine Vision. It's a document that we brought in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. There are forty-four key projects listed in there. So one of the best documents, in my opinion, that this council, this Labour Group has ever managed through our officers to deliver. Now, forty-four key projects listed since twenty fifteen, and several of them, about a third of them have now been completed, and about another third are nearing completion. So you can see that we've been working on building out the new city centre, bringing our city forward for quite some time, and it goes well before twenty fifteen as well. The Sunderland City Plan, twenty sixteen to twenty twenty, carries a surprising amount of this detail. I suggest you all read it. The Sunderland Business Plan, twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen, the bids were hugely important in working with us and getting a lot of this done. And now that they've got their licence for the next five years, I'm looking forward to their next business plan to enable us to carry forward with that. Sunderland's Housing Investment Prospectives. It's a council document. Very, it's got a great deal of detail about what we're trying to do with housing, where we're trying to do it, how we're trying to do it, who we're working with to get the money. Sigglian's Development and Investment Plans up to twenty nineteen. Very detailed, once again showing fully what we're trying to do, where we're trying to do it. The Course Strategy and Development Plan, twenty fifteen to twenty thirty-three draft, because it's currently with the planning inspector, and we've got to go through this year with the public, quite rightly making further conversations with the planning inspector about the things that they are unhappy with, and the planning inspector will make their decision on that at that stage. But we're not saying we're going to do everything by twenty thirty-three councillor Oliver. It is an eighteen-year plan. Not everything's going to get built on the first day or the last day. It's to show the aspiration that this Labour Group has for this city going forward and understanding that we will have a short-term plan, a medium-term plan, and lo and behold, a long-term plan, because that is how ministers and government like to know, that we are grown-ups and we are serious about how we get access to money and what we do with it. And of course, in closing, I support the notice of motion. I do appreciate you bringing it as something for us to discuss, but I would say going forward, the next time, come up with an original idea of your own, because I'm sick to death of this Labour Group coming up with them first. And don't ride on our coattails councillor Oliver. But I do appreciate the thought behind the notice of motion. I hope everybody supports it. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's very, very short, because the lady talks for a considerable period of time, which is always useful. Just a couple of quick points. There's a difference between Dundee and Sunderland. Dundee are directly run by the Conservative government, as we are here in England. They are under the SNP, they're so much better, to be perfectly honest. Lots of shipbuilding and Pyrex plant had a significant impact on the number of jobs in the city. Guess what? That was a Margaret Thatcher thing, where she traded the shipbuilding with Europe in order to bring other things into the city. So, again, we're one of those things. But I wanted to remind people that we used to have a fantastic town hall, absolutely stunning architecture, and I appreciate it, it's hard to imagine, but once upon a time, the Conservatives ran Sunderland, and it's a really strange, it's a really strange feeling, Madam Mayor, but this fantastic building that is now much lamented and missed by the people of the city was pulled down by a Conservative government, or a Conservative council, I should say. So, you know, while I will support this, every single elected member has aspirations, not only for the city centre, but for the whole of the city of Sunderland. So I will support this motion, but again, just think that the right amount of blame should be put in the right places for some of the derogation and direction we've got to make.
Thank you very much councillor Kelly. Councillor Porthouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'm scratching my hair, got to say here. The lady filled it all in. He hasn't actually left us very much to say. Oh no, I've got, I've got maybe five minutes worth here. Can I ask councillor Oliver, councillor, where do you live? What mushroom is it that you live in? Is there a cloud over the top of your head? Do you not read any of the documents that are published? The lady's actually itemised them all, and I mean them there. But you're hypocritical, because at the last meeting, you voted against the Draft Course Strategy Development Plan, which is the future building of the city, and you voted against it. And yet you have the audacity to come along this evening and put a motion in the condition of the city centre. Yes, we know the city centre is not right, we know the plans are there to go ahead of it, but why don't you two know? Where have you been? Can't you say, for example, you know, your government was responsible for the closure of the industry in this city? For not only mining, not only shipbuilding. David Brown Gate boxes, Pyrex, they used to have three thousand people work down at Hendon, they used to have seven factories here producing clothes for M and S. You had a whole host of things that your government closed down. Those people that worked there lived in Sunderland. Now, I think what this Labour-controlled council has done in the past, it is done, it's done very well, they bring jobs into Sunderland. Unfortunately, those jobs are regional jobs, so the people that worked at Nissar, and let's be fair, Nissar was the size of two deep colonies, Westmore and Waymo, for example, that's the size of it, and look at the number of colonies that you closed down. You look at Duxford International, where the people from there come from all over the North East, and live there. So those people, although we have a high workforce in Sunderland, do not live in Sunderland, and the plans are to bring them back into Sunderland, and to increase the housing opportunities in Sunderland, and to also increase four- and five-bedroom homes. Getting back to the Vox site, I look, because you always bring the Vox site, you're very good at it. Eleven years, Tesco, in the Tesco land bank, eleven years. Two to three years to realign St Mary's Boulevard, what happened the next nine years? We had us turned. Two-hundred-and-ninety-million pounds took out of our budget, just in Sunderland, five billion in the North East area, five billion! And you're sitting there complaining, when are you going to start building the shops and when are you going to start doing the retail? Sunderland City Council wasn't responsible for the closure of the Bins Stores, Sealy Air, Blackwood. Do you remember those fashions?
Georgia James?
I remember, Newmarket Town, isn't it? In chickens. A council doesn't close shops down. Neither can it has the reserve, has it not, the hospital, it's open shop, they can help and encourage it to work. The lady's mentioned all the other ones, the Bishop Weymouth Townscape, Haas, Borth, No Progress, Northern Spy, I am. So, I mean, it's there. I suggest that you have a look at the Grimsby Review. I was down at the meeting with the K City's yesterday, he was there, he's a very clever man, and he put up on the screen of all the large companies that have closed down, you know, our Toys R Us and all those. He put another one, and in there, he's kept telling everybody, he's taught the investors in that, these will go in the next four to five years. And I'm not going to tell you what we are, because it might alarm on a telephone, but he knows so much about retail and city centres. Madam Mayor, I'm going to support the motion from our colleagues over there. I don't think they know what they're doing. I don't think they know where they live. I don't think that they read anything that goes in front of them. And it's absolutely disgraceful that they should, they should know that. To bring these motions to council, that this council is proactive, it's busy, it's got a plan, and I support this motion, but just start ringing a little bit of something that's produced. My pleasure.
Thank you, councillor Porthouse. Councillor Ward?
This was the wrong time to take off the chair. I do apologise. Thank you, thank you. We will be. For charity, I can hardly stop. Or vote forward. We will be supporters of motion. We live under the banner to not despair. We are being watched over, and yet for many residents, and as a city councillor, Madam Mayor, it's the hope they can't stand. Five to ten years and beyond, they've been waiting a long time. It's good to know where I can find the things that are happening in twenty nineteen. What's really useful to know is that Jackie White's market is being refurbished. Can I ask one thing? Please fix the lift. We've been asking for a long time. If that could be included, that would be splendid. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Ward. Councillor Oliver, you all right to make the line?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everyone for their contributions. When I listen to councillor Miller, I'm reminded of a quote from Friedrich Engels that I gave my pupils this morning, which was, "An ounce of action is worth a tonne of ideas." It was interesting, away from actually what we talked about the city centre, was the reaction of councillor Miller and councillor Porthouse. This is a public meeting, the public have been asked for their views on the city centre, and they will be told what the response was. Very kindly, a Conservative councillor passed me a piece of paper with a four-letter word to describe councillor Miller. It begins with S, it ends with G, it's not slug, but it is smug. My goodness. Given, given the public perception, given the public perception of Sunderland city centre, and I have to say, you'd struggle if you walked around Sunderland all day long to find that many people who thought the city centre was where it should be, to come out with, "Hold on to my coattails, we have a plan." The Labour Party seem to forget two things. First of all, they've been in charge in this city for forty-five years. It's, if you do any good, then that's fine. But it's no good blaming the Tories for taking down the town hall forty-six years ago. We have, of course, had a local plan. I think I might just actually mention something about the local plan. The Conservatives voted against the local plan, Democrats voted against the local plan, three Labour councillors from council ward voted against the local plan. So, there you are, you have to get the chief whip up and running, I think, councillor Miller. But some Labour councillors didn't vote against the local plan. And what happens then, those residents in those wards where those councillors have been going around saying, "Yes, yes, resident, we will support you on your concerns about the green belt and housing, yes, yes, of course." Then email us, probably councillor Hudson as well, and say, "Why do my local councillor just help with the local plan then?" So that's a very interesting one. The second thing they don't really accept is austerity has obviously affected everyone, but why is it that Newcastle, for example, and Gateshead, that get exactly the same local government funding formula have advanced and we haven't? Why is that? Yeah, of course, councillor Hudson's absolutely right, it's a lived-up councillor. Why is that? You cannot simply blame austerity, because if austerity somehow affects you differently to another city that's also a North East city, also about the same size, also overlooked. You cannot, you cannot use that as an excuse. Yeah, but the people of Sunderland say, "Why is Newcastle like that? And it's the same in all the things I've said? And why is Sunderland different?" They want their city to be as good as that city, which gets the same formula of money. So, to sum up, Madam Mayor, yes, we will do our homework, councillor Miller, and read all these plans for the second time, of course, and I do hope that in the future, future months, it is not like Theresa May, nothing has changed, but that you show us that you are not smug, but you are a man of action. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. So I think we've all agreed that we are going to accept, agree this motion. Can we have a show of hands, or do we agree the motion? Thank you very much indeed. We'll now move on to the last motion of the evening, which is councillor Hudson. Would you like to read out? Oh, sorry, I do beg your pardon. The fourth notice of motion has been withdrawn for this evening, and we're moving on to the fifth mentioned. I do apologise, I thought you were aware of that. Councillor Hudson, could you read your notice of motion?
Yes. Mayor, I move the following motion, which is entitled, "The Council Buffet, or How I Learned to Stop Chopping and Love the Pack Lunch." This council recognises that citizens of Sunderland feel the provision of meals to councillors after meetings is not a justifiable use of taxpayers' money. Accordingly, the council resolves to end the provision of meals after meetings for councillors and their guests, and scrap the facility for councillors to make subsistence expenses claims in cases other than an organised stay. I move the motion, Mayor Sunderland.
Councillor O'Brien, do you second the motion?
I second the motion, Madam Mayor, I'm reserved to have to speak.
Would you like to speak to the motion, councillor Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Okay. Mayor Sunderland, the provision of meals to councillors at taxpayers' expense is an anachronism. It's something that has been long abolished at many of the local authorities, but which for some reason clings on here in Sunderland. This motion calls for us to ditch the free meals, and I will say from the off that I recognise this is a small sum amongst the council's multi-million-pound outgoing, but it's not about the money, or at least it's not chiefly about the money. It's about the fact that this council, under real government pressure to make savings, draws the line at having councillors share the burden. I do not support personally every cut that has been passed on to this council, but I think it's appalling that the council leadership will make cuts to services to residents and yet protect itself and its own perks. I think we have to show that the punishing cuts that affect this council affect its councillors as well, and perks like free dinners should absolutely have been the first thing to go, because they are indefensible. The leader, commenting to the press on the subject, said the Lib Dems are obsessed with this issue. Well, yes, Graham, we are. Unless you, Graham, have been living underneath a mushroom, you would know that this council, and particularly its councillors', reputation amongst city residents is muck. There is a long-running perception of councillors being on the gravy train, and successive council leaders have done nothing to challenge it, quite the opposite. Like the current leader, they've defended it with preposterous non- Like the, the current leader, they've defended it with preposterous non-arguments, to say it's cheaper having councillors get a free buffet than having them claim for food expenses, which to me, reasonably admits to the public that you can't trust your own councillors not to waste public money. And with one former councillor writing into the Ethel in defence of his free dinners, that he had to excuse himself from a council chair, this council chamber, because he was, and I quote, "Fared with hunger." Well, I say, get a grip, this is bloody embarrassing. You cannot cut small expenses, like, for example, funding for blind charities or travel for disabled children and continue to have the public pay for your dinner.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, I really think we can deal without the bad language in this council chamber. I've already had an example of councillor Stephen O'Brien's bad language earlier in the week, but to verbally convey that type of language in the council chamber is, in my opinion, unacceptable, and I would ask, I would ask the councillors just not to indulge in this.
Yes, I agree with councillor Lawson, I'm sure councillor Hudson will refrain from the bad language.
Hold that tone. But you can't cut small expenses like, say, funding for blind charities or travel for disabled children and continue to have the public pay for your dinner. When the council, at substantial expense, ran a full-budget consultation with the public last year, the cost of councillors and their gravy train to the taxpayer came up again and again, that's what the public told us. I raised it with you in this chamber at that meeting. But, once again, the public will not listen to, this matter was ignored and no changes were made. The buffet and the expenses, in case you don't realise it, that's part of the gravy train. In recent years, we've still seen individual councillors claiming over £5,000 per year each on subsistence expenses. And notoriously, Mayor of Sunderland, even more on their travel expenses. There are some quite astonishing cases, if you look in the, the Ethel. The public are not blind to this, it looks appalling and it has to stop. The Liberal Democrats on this council don't attend the buffet and do not claim subsistence expenses. We pay our own way and we go for dinner after meetings like this one, and I extend an open invitation for you to join us and give your money to a local hostelry rather than take your dinner from the public purse. But we are putting forward this motion, Mayor, because we want to be able to go back to our residents and say that the council has agreed to share the burden, that cuts are being made to councillors too, because that's fair. When I explain this council's free food arrangements to councillors on other authorities, they are shocked, they think this is all gone years ago. And I know from speaking to some councillors in this chamber that you agree that these meals and buffets are unnecessary. Indeed, since the Liberal Democrats have been obsessing over the issue, indeed since there've been Liberal Democrats on the council in recent years, amazingly, quietly, Labour Party expenses claims have started to tumble. The year I was elected, the claims, the subsistence expenses claimed, in the year I was elected, there was published the subsistence expenses. Michael Boddy, £1,492 on food, Harry Truman, £924, Tommy Wright. I can see that I've never claimed a single penny in subsistence or travel expenses from this council. While councillor Hudson referred to it, was sent to the Ethel, was travelled out in my room when I was on a conference, was treating a hotel accommodation, that was misapplied to my name in that column on that year. I have never claimed subsistence, never claimed travel.
Thank you, thank you councillor Maudie for the clarification.
Happy to say credit. But my point is that gradually, over the, over the last few years, the expenses claimed that have been made by councillors have been falling quietly without comment. What I would like them to do is go the whole hog and ditch the trough. I hope that councillors will support the motion and end the provision of free meals and subsistence allowances, except in event of an oversight stay. Thank you then.
Councillor Hudson, thank you very much indeed. Councillor Oliver, I understand that you wish to move an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The amendment is as follows. Insert "some" after recognised as that, insert "of the full council" after meetings, insert "free" after provision of, insert "of the full council" after meetings, after guests, insert or introduce a facility for councillors to pay, so that the motion now reads. This council recognises that some residents of Sunderland feel the provision of free meals to councillors after meetings of the full council is not a justifiable use of taxpayers' money. Accordingly, council resolves to end the provision of free meals after meetings of the full council for councillors and their guests, or introduce a facility for councillors to pay and scrap the facility for councillors to make subsistence claims in cases other than an overnight stay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Mullin, I understand you're going to second that?
I will second that, Madam Mayor.
Do you wish to speak to that, councillor Oliver, to the amendment?
Madam Mayor, I think it's, it's quite self-explanatory, the, the main change, of course, is that I accept councillor Hudson's view that the public will look at this and see £5,000 and decide that that's not a justifiable expense, so councillors can, if they wish to partake in the meals, simply pay for it themselves. The meals in themselves, I think, have some, some benefit of, of socialising with people from other groups, and I'm quite happy to do that. But I think, the point having been put to council, I would agree that either they are scrapped or that councillors are invited to simply pay for them themselves. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Mullin, you didn't reserve the right to speak, do you wish to speak now? Can I ask, please, does anyone else wish to speak to the amendment?
Point of order, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, is the motion in order? Because a motion asks the council to resolve to do something, either one thing or the other thing. This amendment is asking to either or, to pick, so how can, effectively, is it in order that it's given a choice?
Yes, we are going to proceed with the amendment. It's, it's asking either or, so we are going to proceed with it. Does anyone wish to speak to the amendment on this motion? Okay, so we're going to have an electronic vote, do you agree with the amendment? We'll have a vote.
Madam Mayor, there are 13 votes in favour, no abstentions, 48 votes against, and so the amendment is defeated.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to speak on the substantive motive, uh, motion? Leader, would you like to speak, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do question whether our FIBDEB colleagues really understand the pressures that this council faces after nine years of austerity. I really do question the, the lucidity of your argument, ladies and gentlemen. Continually obsessing over a minor catering item at a handful of meetings clearly shows that I genuinely believe you have your priorities completely wrong. Since 2010, this council has lost over £290 million from its budget due to George Osborne's pernicious use of austerity as a political tool to attack northern councils, an act that was fully supported by the Lib Dems and coalition with Tory party at the time. Now, you want to focus on £5,000, I want to focus on the effect of losing £290 million, which is the real problem with service reduction in this city. But you're trying to do cheap politics through that tiny figure because it plays to a handful of people in the city who think that councillors have their noses in the trough. Well, you're entitled to your view, but at the end of the day, you're wrong. I have to say that this is what I think of your notice of motion, outrage, I'm outraged by it, outrage, right? You would think that they would want to focus on what those destructive cuts were doing to public service delivery in the city, and how it was affecting residents' lives, but no, no. They continued focus on a very small amount of money that is spent to ensure that, let's get the right people first, council staff, guests and councillors can receive a basic meal, it's a basic meal, not getting anything special going through there at the end of this meeting whenever we finish, right? Is your pathetic attempt at a smoke stream to deflect focus from your party's appalling record in government and that you are equally complicit in inflicting great harm on this city by supporting a Tory party in the government in 2010 that was so right a centre that even Margaret Thatcher would have blushed in shame. And you were complicit in enabling austerity to come forward as a political tool, driving nearly £300 million out of the budget that delivered services to this city, and you want to quibble on about £5,000 out of that? I know which figure's more important to me. A bit more outrage for me, bit more outrage. This false flag, notice of motion, non-story, is there to deflect criticism that can be quite rightly aimed at you. You have an abysmal record both locally and nationally, and helped introduce some of the most malicious policies ever to impact on the British people. Austerity is a political tool, the bedroom tax, imposing universal credit, lying to students about fees and then supporting the Tories in government to increase them. You cannot trust the FIBDMS, the FIBDMS, the FIBDMS, they are so twisted, they cannot lie straight in bed. More outrage. I love, I love this councillor O'Brien leaflet, I'm going to use it many, many times, I think. Regarding the £5,000 that we spend per year supporting our staff, our guests and councillors at our handful of full council meetings, we surely have a duty of care in that provision of a warm meal at the end of a very long day. Full council starts at 6pm, and if you're in employment, have caring duties, or something else that keeps you busy until 5pm, you're going to be coming straight to council without the benefit of an evening meal, and without the benefit of actually packing your pack lunch. Because I've got mine, and I, I'm fine, but not everybody has the joy of having the time to do that, councillor O'Brien, right? This can mean people going without food for more than eight hours. Our last full council on the 19th of November lasted nearly four and a half hours, finishing just before 10.30pm, and are people really seriously saying it is wrong to feed our staff, our guests and all our councillors, if they want it, after possibly a 10-hour break from their last meal? Are you really saying that, that in the 21st century, that's how uncaring we need to be? Well, hold it, gentlemen, because it's fine, it's just a ridiculous suggestion from ridiculous people completely divorced from reality, in my humble opinion. I see that councillor O'Brien's latest leaflet of lies, lies, goes on about all you, goes on about, oh, and goes on, right, well, if you give me, if you give me a minute, if you give me a minute, I'll justify lies, right? Goes on about all-you-can-eat buffets after council meetings. All-you-can-eat buffets, it just looks something you get on a cruise ship, isn't it? Without the cruise ship, without the lobster, without the beer, without the champagne, we're definitely doing something wrong, colleagues. What's through there is a basic mince and dumplings and a vegetable option, you know? Really, seriously, that's just nonsense. Anyway, all-you-can-eat buffet after council meetings, no mention of how few meetings there actually are, or that, and what the cost actually is, because they don't mention the fact that it's only £5,000 in this piece of rubbish, right? He goes on to overstate the cost of the proposed new civic centre, £540 million. You need, at the end of the day, you do have difficulty as a group sorting out your finances, you really have to get a grip of what the numbers really mean. And to be saying, eh, £80 million for the cost of the new civic centre, which is pretty much double what it's going to cost. You also need to do your homework and read your literature, right? Because at the end of the, that's both opposition parties now getting homework. Please, please read the documents so that you understand what the finances are like, right? Now. Once again, councillor O'Brien deliberately confuses revenue budgets that pay for vital services that his, yes, you are, that your party in government helped cut by £290 million. So, the cost of vital services that you bang on about in this leaflet were caused by your gov, your government in 2010 to 2015, because that's what established austerity, and then you put the cheeky bang on in here about the Labour council not being able to deliver services because your party took £290 million out of their budget. That's the real story behind this leaflet, not £5,000 on a bit of food for people who've had a long day who need a meal at the end of the day. And in any other sector that I ever worked in, as a private employer, I offend my staff if they were at this time of night, because it's just what you do. Now, that is the real story behind rubbish like this notice of motion, it's a smoke stream to hide the fact that the real blame lies with them and the Conservative party. And you confuse revenue funds with capital funds because you don't understand money clearly. We are, they don't, they're just not interested in anything the council produces. Just tell bare-faced lies. Now, I have to say, this, this did make me laugh. In closing, councillor O'Brien modestly describes himself, modestly, as the best councillor Granton has ever had. Darren colleagues, don't be mean, less, less. Are you okay, Madam Mayor? I believe this is a point, have you seen this councillor leaflet out regarding councillor O'Brien? As he might have been seen skulking around Millfield desperately looking for a new ward of residence. The best councillor Granton has ever seen, really? Do me a favour, more lying than worse councillor Granton has never seen. Outrage, outrage. I fully oppose the notice of motion and hope everybody joins in with me. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Leader, typical Leader.
Madam Mayor, the only place that this issue is being discussed is in this chamber. I've campaigned in Hendon, Sandale, Pallion, Fulwell, St Peters, St Chars, Duxford, Millfield, Barnes, in the last four to five months. Not one resident has brought up on the doors to me what's in this notice of motion. Madam Mayor, the only people who care about it are the Liberal Democratic group in the well, and they care about it because they want to distract attention away from their abysmal records, both here in Sunderland and nationally. Madam Mayor, I would commend to cancel a report that's recently been published by the Centre for Cities think-tank, which stated that Sunderland has been the 17th most affected city in terms of austerity. And we all know when the austerity programme started, it started in 2010, when Nick Clough couldn't wait to get his hands, his little, greasy little hands on a red ministerial box, and he sold his soul, he sold the party, and in particular sold the students down the river. So, we, we're lumbered with austerity, and it's been enforced and driven home even more since 2015. Madam Mayor, we should be debating in this chamber a whole raft of issues that affect the people of Sunderland. that affect the people of Sunderland. Why are the Liberal Democrats not bringing forward a motion to apologise to the people of Sunderland, indeed the people of the country, for the impacts of the bedroom tax? There's people in my ward living with the effects of the bedroom tax that they imposed on them. Why do we not have a debate brought forward by the Liberal Democrats condemning universal credit, which is driving people to suicide in places in this country? Madam Mayor, why do we not have a notice of motion from the Liberal Democrats apologising? They saw policy and they represent the ethnic minority people in the city, but they weren't too keen when they had to involve in to create the hostile environment, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, you go on and on and on, cuts to local government, the crisis in local government finance started by the Liberal Democrats, the cuts to the police force up and down the country. Northumbria Police is the force in the country that has had the highest level of cuts with any police force, a policy instigated by the Liberal Democrats. Madam Mayor, we have medical health services in crisis. We have children's services in crisis, adult services in crisis. Legally, it's been stripped back because of policies of the Liberal Democrats. Why are they not bringing forward notices of motion to debate them issues? That's what the residents of the Citycom parlayed on, they don't give a toss frankly about meals or subsistence, Madam Mayor, it's an absolute disgrace. I would rather discuss the fact that the IPPR North Think Tank brought out a report, Madam Mayor, December 2019, that said the North of England have seen, 2018, sorry, have seen, the North of England has seen a £6.3 billion worth of cuts while the South councils have seen a £3.2 billion increase. Why are they not bringing that forward?
Thank you, Deputy Leader. Will you please stick to the buffet? It is?
Honestly, I had to stick to the buffet for about a year and a half, Madam Mayor. I had three lumps, I've got a fiancee and a dog talk after, I'm on a night, 10 o'clock.
Sorry, I think it's sausage and chips, Mike.
But Madam Mayor, it's true, this notice of motion is a complete and utter waste of everyone's time. When they were in government, they brought in support of the northern powerhouse. Why not talk about tonight, the fact that £326 per head of population is spent in residence in London?
Point of order, Madam Mayor. I would gladly debate any of these things, in fact, I wonder if it would... You really do have to stick to the motion.
Yes, please, come and stick to the motion.
Move the motion, Mike, we're talking about these things.
I'll stick to the notice of motion.
Absolutely, thank you.
Madam Mayor. We have to ask ourselves a question. Why are the Liberal Democrats at every single opportunity they get bringing up the issue of subsistence expenses? Why do they want to remove the independent remuneration panel role to determine the subsistence and expenses? Why are they so hell-bent on getting their hands, the click of their hands on a system that should be independent and rightly so, it should remain independent? Well, it might be a clue, Madam Mayor, the fact that when the Liberal Democrats were the group two, they had no compunction effectively running down here, day one after councillor O'Brien was elected and councillor Hodgson was to claim his £6,276.96 as the Labour minority party's matriarch, of councillor O'Brien leading the group of two, so had no problems in claiming £4,184 to the local house. The facts of subsistence, subsistence, mention of the notice of motion, stick to the notice of motion. In 2017. In the financial year 2017, 2018, there's how much subsistence was claimed by the 75 elected members on this council. To the year, to date, Madam Mayor, 18th of November, from the 1st of April 2018 to date, there's been £25.88 claimed. This is a crisis that's been manufactured by the Liberal Democrats to distract people from the real issues. Neither lectures on, from the Liberal Democrats, on the misuse, on the use of public funds, when they have two of their members under investigation for stealing allegedly public funds to pay for the electricity.
I would appreciate your advice on this list and statements like that being made about an active standards committee investigation in the full council, please.
And if you were to be raised around active standards committee investigation. I'm reading reports on an article that appeared in the Sunderland Daily. To Madam Mayor, in conclusion, Madam Mayor, in conclusion, this debate is deliberately held effectively to further erode the public trust in councillors and partly in the public discourse. I think we have to see it honestly, that this side of the chamber will always stand up for the residents of Sunderland. We will always put forward policies and proposals that will look after the city and drive the city forward. The Liberal Democrats, Madam Mayor, are more interested in sausage rolls than they are in Sunderland.
Thank you, councillor Maudie. Councillor Hodgson, did you wish to say something? Because I didn't hear what you said.
It was getting quite loud, yeah. What I asked was, I would like to get the opinion of the solicitor on comments such as have been made, direct allegations against two councillors of mine who are subject to an ongoing standards investigation because I don't see how that reflects getting a fair hearing in this council.
I don't think that that is something that we can discuss in this council chamber, and I think it's something that you will have to take up with the solicitor. It's not something that we wish to be discussed here, and I'm sure you don't want to discuss in here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Right, well, I'll follow on from the leader and deputy leader in relation to our one or two really good speeches showing there. That was it as well, thank you. But in there, I'm really shocked, surprised at this notice of motion that's been put forward by the Liberal Democrats. After it, the previous two council meetings, they have managed to have relatively sensible, thought-provoking resolutions, sorry, motions that received the support of this council chamber. But it would appear that tonight they've gone back to type and really looking for a cheap headline. And as the leader said, try to hide the real facts of their position as a party in relation to orchestrating the austerity programme that we're under. I've been around quite a long time with the council, and in my younger days, I did have a full-time job. And I'm just looking at the sort of timetable I would have on a Wednesday before council. I mean, I would need to leave work, leave work about seven o'clock in the morning. I would be having my lunch, should be at half past 12 or half an hour, finishing work around about five to get to the council chamber for six. Hopefully looking forward for something to eat, something warm to eat, Madam Mayor, about nine or 10 o'clock at night. And for people who are working full-time, it is important to have that hot meal after a full council meeting. And we're really just talking about full council meetings here, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I really find it quite surprising that, you know, considering all the discussions we've had tonight and the reference to the position of the council and the funding gap that we have of exactly £293.9 million, just to be precise. This is their big idea, to help us solve things in the city, a lunchbox. And I really find, I really find, so these are small lunchboxes, and I do notice that the leader's got a bigger lunchbox. But, Madam Mayor, I am outraged by the fact that, I am outraged by the fact that, as you can see, my supper's not in the lunchbox. And I really am quite upset about that. But it would appear that my wife has left me a note in here, and I'm just gonna have a look. Okay, 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 right. Dear Paul, Madam Mayor, good start. Some of your lunchboxes empty, but the main man in my life, Leo the Lizard, we don't have a lizard, was hungry last night, and he's had yours. So I am outraged that Leo the Lizard is taking advantage of me. If the meat takes a lot of time, you do grow hungry, can you ask that really nice man, Green, if he has anything left in his own lunchbox? Oh, I don't like Pringles. Anyway, I have enclosed a McDonald's voucher, just in case. Right, Big Mac sandwich, Big Mac or Chicken Mac sandwich, for whatever it is, a medium prize for £1.99.
No appetizing.
Right, Madam Mayor, it's expired, so I'm again outraged, outraged, Madam Mayor. Right, okay, see you after midnight, when the meeting is finished. Well, let's hope it's finished before midnight, love, Dawn. Okay. Madam Mayor, there's another note in here. There's a piece of correspondence from a customer within the city. We've heard of letters to the Echo, this is letters to the Cabinet Secretary. And it's from, let's call her Sue, and she's an ex-liberal Democrat voter from Grindon Ward, from Fosham, sorry. She says that she's outraged, Madam Mayor, outraged at this silly motion that distracts from the real issues facing local people within the city. She's outraged, Madam Mayor, that the local Liberal Democrat councillors refuse to condone their own national leadership who orchestrated the public sector cuts that we are facing and with their Tory friends. And Madam Mayor, I'll give some, an answer back to Sue, call her Sue, in relation to the impact on the council by the work done by their national party, this cable and company, while they were in the same bed with the most right-wing government as could be seen in living memory. Madam Mayor, we've got a budget deficit, sorry, a budget gap of £293.9 million by the end of March. There's gonna be another £25 million of cuts last year. It's all down to them, because they start with the ball rule and get into bed with their party nationally back in 2010. Madam Mayor, the deputy leader referenced the Centre for Cities report, and he's quite right, was 17th worst affected city in the country with regards to austerity down to the Liberal Democrats. I don't blame the Tories, well, actually, I do blame the Tories, but not necessarily. Because earlier today, you were supposed to make the so-called Left of Centre Party, where you quite happily went to bed with the right-wing Tory government and were quite happy to see cuts on local services and local people. And I disagree with you, I agree with you. They should have the honesty to see a local government, a party nationally, gone abroad. Okay. Okay, there's no talk about them and the austerity programme and the two and a half thousand jobs that's been lost in this council. And that's two and a half thousand families, Madam Mayor. They're silent on that, they'd rather talk about lunchboxes, the job cuts imposed because of their coalition government. Madam Mayor, if we come back to Sue, okay, what else does she say? Okay, she says she's, yeah, she's outraged again, Madam Mayor, she's outraged again. Because the Liberal councillors, Liberal Democrat councillors are refusing to condemn other Liberal Democrats in other Liberal Democrat councils actually that they control, who also provide food at council rooms. Really? Yes. But I, but I, now I'll leave some of them, yes, I'll leave it. But there's not a long list, I have to admit, and some of them, quite a lot of them, I've never heard of. But you're talking about Bedford, Eastbourne, South Somerset, Sutton, Watford, today we're few. And it goes on, but similar assistance to this authority. And don't hear you condemning the Liberal Democrat leaders. In fact, gratefully enough, now it does condemn the Liberal Democrat leaders. And we'll let them tell their friends how about that. So if we go on, continue this, we continue this. She's outraged, Madam Mayor, she's also outraged about the fact that the Liberal Democrat councillors refuse to take responsibility for the impact of their austerity programme on child poverty in the city, Madam Mayor. They'd rather talk about a lunchbox than they would about child poverty.
Stick to the motion, please, councillor Stewart.
Madam Mayor, in 2010, before this lot went to bed with the right-wing Tories, there was no food banks in this city in 2010. Madam Mayor, we now have 13 undefeated people because they can't afford to get food themselves. Now, their responsibility, they were in government, with their lot, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, child poverty in this city is an issue and a problem, and it needs to be recognised. I would remind them that this is that they are councillors, they represent individuals in their wards. And I'll just give two examples here. Pallion, child poverty rate there is 39.25%. Sandale is 37.9%.
Councillor Stewart, Councillor Stewart, stick to the motion, please.
Apologies, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, in relation to the motion, what I would say is, and again, it's about the attitude of that group of Liberal Democrats and others in relation to child poverty. What I would say is, and I will just, I had another note, Madam Mayor, and it says this, is that certain councillor, I'll be, well, we'll be having this meeting tonight, has been on Facebook, put a screenshot that states, "Don't breed them if you can't feed them." So I don't know, maybe she will have a look.
Councillor Stewart, your time's up.
Move the vote, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, indeed. I think we'll now move on to councillor McLennan, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'm the cabaret.
Could the desk please reset the timer? Could you reset the timer, thank you?
It's not when you keep buttering and whipping behind yourself. Okay, yes, I'm gonna take the assumption that I'm the cabaret, so tonight I'm speaking to you with the helpful assistance of my beautiful colleague who will assist me in this activity. Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Colleagues, I rise tonight to speak against this motion. Firstly, I must say I am outraged at the implication made by the Lib Dems in this motion, specifically that I and my colleagues are picking it. It's particular mention to, by, from one of my colleagues near me, who is very distressed at the idea of you implying that she lives in a pigsty. It's not funny. I am outraged that the Lib Dems would bring this council into such disrepute by repeating the rubbishing lies created in the political gutter and already force-fed to residents through their mass leafleting of offensive material. Their action is the politics of the pigsty. It is also potentially breach in child protection. On the inside of this outraged leaflet, there's a reference to what you should do with, if a Labour calls. That was read out to a parent by a six-year-old? Do you think that's right? I certainly don't. I am equally outraged that you think you can think of nothing more important, that you can think of nothing more important to debate than this twaddle when this council...
She is now.
I am equally outraged that you can think of nothing more important to debate than this twaddle when the council has been stripped financially to the bone and faced with nine years of austerity imposed on us by the Tory Liberal Democrat government. We are now using the city's born marrow to keep services going. We should be debating the impact of austerity, unemployment, growing housing waiting lists, the plethora of unscrupulous landlords renting substandard properties to the most vulnerable, not pie and chips. Finally, I am outraged that you think the residents in this city will believe the lies and muck you are spreading. You would work well as muck-rake is on a local farm. Voters are sick to death of your repeated reference to the issue of post-full council meeting meals. You are clearly a one-trick pony and are not even honest enough to explain to the residents that the meals you are referring to are served up, served up to eight times a year, only at full council meetings. Excuse me? Can you just wait till I'm finished? Thank you. It is time to put your phony pony out to pasture once. The reality is, it is cheaper to provide a meal after full council meetings than it is to process and pay out up to 75 meal allowance claims for council members, each a £10.60p. Can you just let me finish? Thank you, councillor. In payment, I must point out that councillors are entitled to claim by national guidelines, not local preference. In the last few years, this council has learned how to maximise the spending impact of smaller and smaller amounts of cash, thanks to the callous and immoral acts committed by the Tories, Lib Dems, and their well-to-do foie gras and caviar-eating friends in the financial world, the bankers. No packed lunches for them. From their swamp, these money-grabbing parasites... Excuse me, councillor O'Neil, excuse me, Madam Mayor. Councillor O'Brien, sorry. It's so rare I see you. Councillor O'Brien, I had the courtesy to be quiet when you were ranting and talking, mainly ranting. Would you please listen to me? Thank you. From their swamp, these money-grabbing parasites are trained without casting a second glance at the people who are suffering because of their greed and profligate. Nevertheless, the council is excellent at getting the best value possible for money spent, using resources and staff for more than one task. The post-full council meal serves several purposes. It saves the council money compared with the potential bill from legal meal, from legally, legal meal subsidy accounts. It provides vital basic sustenance for those who are so dedicated to their council duties, aka councillor Stewart, as explained, aka councillor Maudy, he's always here, I get emails at three o'clock in the morning off him, right, who are so dedicated to council duties that they don't have the time to go home for a meal or call in at a caf. Many members hold down jobs, full and part-time, including yourself, councillor Hodson, I believe. I think you work, don't you? Preventing them from the luxury of coming off the treadmill and calling home for food in between finishing work and standing attending council meetings. And before members on the other side demand that we should only have full-time councillors, I'd like to note that the life experiences and professional knowledge and insight these councillors provide adds additional quality and depth to the council's work in this city. These meetings are long and intense as we try to diminish and diminish the rubbish and false statements that you say. Right, if you want to reduce the time spent on the meetings and the need for a meal, might I suggest that you stop wasting our time on stupid motions like this one and pathetic questions. In the interest of fairness and transparency, I am speaking on behalf of the majority party tonight to offer not an olive branch, but a garlic bump to our colleagues in the minority opposition seats. I am therefore proud to unveil the role, the first trial sample of the City of Sunderland's Happy Meal deal, a packed lunch posh. We have decided to allow councillor Hodson and his fellow Lib Dems to sample them and feed back to us their thoughts. We are sure the Happy Meal deals will satisfy their hunger and help them make the switch to a diet of facts, not lies, in offender and downright slanderous rubbish which they have been force-feeding the residents in the city. I am hoping to secure some cross-party support here in order to distribute the first samples to the six Liberal Democrats here tonight. I'll use you, George, you don't mind. Okay, so, for everyone here, I briefly outline the contents of our trial Happy Meal deals. An eat-on-the-go ready meal for your, of premier meat, various labels, for the people in your classroom. What, my, people who, sorry. Okay, right. If you don't like it, you could always give it to your muggies. Water to wash out the opposition's minds and mouths when they are considering resorting to gutter politics. The bottle can, of course, be reused and should last until May, when we hopefully part company with you all. A voucher for a free meal at one of the city's soup kitchens or free lunch clubs. They should find one in all areas of the city. They are increasing in numbers because the Tories and the Lib Dems continue to claim that austerity is needed, regardless of the impact on people's ability to feed themselves and their families and not to resort to feeding themselves cat food. A protein bar to increase your energy levels so that they are able to do your job properly, representing their electorate instead of using their mendacity to gain cheap headlines. All the best Happy Meals, to have a toy to amuse the point. Because our Liberal Democrat guinea pigs are nothing more than troublesome children, regurgitating rubbish in their words and actions, we put two gifts in to see them usefully occupied. The first is a model dinosaur, so that you can familiarise yourself with what your life would be like after me. Secondly, an egg with no yolk, but with a hidden surprise. The egg, this is a good way to call it, this one, okay, the egg has no yolk because this motion is no yolk. It is an insult to the intelligence and common sense of residents in my city. Inside the eggs, they will find their new mascots, fluffy, white, woolly sheep, representing the brainless, brainless herd they are. And earning the ability to ride on the back of Labour's achievements, spewing out lies and anecdotes that I have seriously heard, these voters will be prepared to swallow. This motion has no place in this debating chamber. I oppose it and express my disgust in the Liberal Democrats for attempting to discredit fellow councillors. My prediction on the chance of the motion being successful pings my flag. Councillor?
Thank you very much. Councillor O'Brien, did you wish to speak?
I was going to keep it short, we've got the long version, I'm happy to. The short version. We want to keep the long version now.
Quite now, we'll let councillor O'Brien speak.
Information from the kitchen, the soup's set on, and the cornbread squares are burnt all over the place.
Councillor O'Brien? Well, I don't need any salads. But anyway, Madam Mayor, I think the strapline for the Labour Party probably needs to change now from, from the many, not the few, now it should be officially changed for the bellies of the few. Because, let's face it, let's face it, only seventeen...
I'm a winner. Dinner, couple of chairs, I've been out since quarter to eight this morning, I've been in the previous meetings within this council, I've been making stockings, down, down, down...
I must sit down, what? What?
It wasn't directed at anyone in particular. Councillor O'Brien, please speak.
Thank you. I hope all parties will vote with us. Indeed, I hope they will forego this evening's meal and give it to a homeless charity. I think that's probably better use for it. Well, it's better, they don't even need it either. And I also, actually, I will also extend the olive branch of friendship to all of you and invite you all to JMo's for a pint of the pie after the meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move the vote.
Now, councillor Hodson has the right to...
He hasn't got any right at all once I move the vote. No rights at all.
I am being advised that he does have a right to be advised. Madam Mayor, through you, if I can clarify the provision in the council procedure rules, if there's a motion that the question be put, it should be seconded. If the mayor believes the item has been sufficiently discussed, the procedural motion is put to the vote, and if passed, she will give the mover of the original motion a right reply before putting the motion to the vote.
But when I move, Madam Mayor, when I move the vote, that deprives him of that right to reply.
No, I'm sorry, we've made the decision, councillor Hodson does have the right of replying. Come on, speak, councillor Hodson, if you have anything left to say.
Thank you very much. I have no further comments to add.
Right, thank you, right, thank you. We will move, we'll move to the vote, vote on the substantive motion.
Madam Mayor, there are 13 votes in favour of one abstention, 46 votes against, and therefore the motion is defeated.
Thank you all very much indeed. The next item tonight is reports, which includes a report of the leader on special urgency decisions, a report to declare a vacancy in Washington South Ward, together with a report on appointments to committees and outside bodies. We'll take these in turn, starting with the leader's report on special urgency decisions. Leader, would you move the report?
I move the report, Madam Mayor, there have been no such instances since the last report.
Deputy leader, do you need to second that?
I'll second the report, Madam Mayor.
Does the council agree to receive the report?
Agree.
Next, we'll deal with the report on the vacancy in Washington South Ward. Leader, do you wish to move the report?
I move the report, Madam Mayor, as laid out.
Deputy leader, do you wish to second the report?
I second the report, Madam Mayor.
Do we declare the seat in Washington South Ward to be vacant?
Agree.
Finally, we'll deal with the report on appointments to outside committees and outside bodies. Leader, would you please move the report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move the report as laid out.
Deputy leader, do you second the report?
Second it.
Leader, do you wish to speak to the report?
No, Madam Mayor, I believe it's fully laid out.
Deputy leader, do you wish to speak to the report?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is the report agreed?
Agree.
And that concludes the meeting. Thank you all very much.